Good evening, ladies. Special City Council meeting intended. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The May twentieth, twenty twenty, City Council meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N. twenty-nine-twenty. Mr. McKenney, will you please read that?
Yes. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order dated March seventeenth, two thousand twenty, the City Council is authorized to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and make meetings accessible electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address a legislative body. All Brown Act provisions that require the physical presence of City Council members or the public for City Council meetings are waived. If you're watching the live stream and wish to make a comment during oral communications or on a specific item, you may call nine oh nine, three nine four, six two zero six, and it is also on the screen on TV before the closure of public comment on the agenda.
A public agenda packet is available for your review on the city's website, www.sandemuscal.gov, or by contacting the City Clerk's office at cityclerk@sandemuscal.gov. Madam City Clerk, would you please read the role?
Mayor Bedar.
Here.
Councilmember Bertone.
Here.
Councilmember Ebner.
Here.
Councilmember Mayor Porten Vienna.
Here.
Councilmember Weber.
Here.
Let the record show, all five councilmembers are in attendance.
Also let it be known that Councilman John Ebner is calling in, who's available by telephone. Oral communications? We'll give it about a minute. Thank you for calling. You're live.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. This is Gary Endery. First of all, as you know, or some of you know, I've asked that our City Council budget meetings be televised, so I'm glad to see that we were able to do that this year. But with that said, I do have some problems with the way this has all happened. I don't know if the councilmembers can discuss my concerns, so I'll address my questions to the acting city manager and our city attorney. First of all, Brad, I know you've been thrown right in the middle of the fire, so none of this is personally addressed to you, but addressed to the issues and the problems, not just the ones today, but the ongoing ones that we've had, in my opinion, in the city as far as communicating to the public. I understand this is a special budget session meeting, but everyone should have had the opportunity to look over the proposed budget before the meeting, since this is such an important thing. As we all know, we went out for a sales tax increase and we didn't get that, and I feel that part of that problem is because of the lack of communications that we gave the public on that particular measure. So I think it's even that much more important now that we communicate to the public so that they can see what's going on in the city, where the deeds are, and some of the cuts that you're obviously going to have to make in the future to be within whatever that budget is. But where my concern comes in is why the budget information wasn't posted with agenda when it came out? I don't know if the city attorney can address that question or not.
Gary, unfortunately, the information wasn't completed. The PowerPoint presentation, we just didn't get it done, and as early as I would have liked, so we did get it out as early as possible. In the future, we plan to have multiple meetings regarding the budget, and we will be sure to get that information out with the agenda packet.
Brad, is that a violation of Brown Act?
Mayor, would you like me to respond to the question?
Yes, please.
No, it's not. The only thing that's necessary under the Brown Act in order to hold a meeting is an agenda to be posted for a special meeting twenty-four hours before the meeting. So the materials that are provided to the council for this meeting have been provided and were available to the public at the same time they were provided to the council, and that's not a Brown Act violation.
Okay, well, I was just concerned that, obviously, it wasn't part of the agenda, so the public couldn't see it ahead of time. And I think the council got it at the same time I did, which was around three o'clock this afternoon, which only gives you three hours to be able to review it and hopefully have some questions when you come to the meeting. Like I said, I understand that there's a budget session that you're going to be asking all these questions, but I certainly feel everybody should have the opportunity to see it prior to three hours before the meeting. The other concerns that I have is how was the public informed about the meeting that you're having tonight? I probably can answer those questions myself, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but I know it was on the website as far as under standard meeting. But what I didn't see was on the weekly email. I don't even know if the weekly email updates were going out still. But certainly, the poll data, the city's website, it could have been put on there or was not on there. That's the first thing everybody sees. Certainly, it's the first thing I look at when I go on the website to see the different categories that show and things that are coming up. This was not posted there. It could have been also included in all these coronavirus newsletters that go out every day. The public could have been informed about it that way, too. And so those are just some thoughts that I had as far as getting the word out to people. You know, if you want the public to be informed, you need to inform the public. I don't think we're doing a very good job of that, and this is just another case of what I see as lack of communication, not just to the public, but in this particular case to the council to give a fair time to review the budget that went out. Another thing, seeing at home watching on TV, as you know, we cannot see the slides or read them. So I might have something in front of me to go along with you. I would just like to have had it launched soon in the three or four minutes. With that said, I truly thank you and good luck at your meeting tonight.
Thank you. Tom? And we'll give it about a minute. Okay, we'll get underway this study session, staff presentation for preliminary twenty-twenty, twenty-one budget and proposed capital project session one. Brad?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Tonight's staff will be presenting the preliminary budget developed per prior council direction to include operations, maintenance, and projects that department directors feel are in the best interest of the city for their departments. I do want to apologize for getting this information out too late. It's been pretty hectic getting this presentation, everything together. But in the future, we will have the information attached to the agenda and materials that go out. Staff began working on this year's budget in January twenty-twenty. However, as you're aware, this budget process has been difficult due to many factors. Hit with many uncertainties surrounding COVID-19 virus, staff was tasked with basically developing two different budgets, the one being presented tonight in an emergency budget that includes only critical operating and maintenance costs and projects that directors feel are critical to the health of the city's infrastructure. The main goal of tonight's presentation is to get direction from council on the use of reserves during this unprecedented time due to the pandemic and emergency situation. Another goal is to allow directors to explain the importance of projects that they feel are in the best interest of the city and to gather input and direction from council to implement revisions to the preliminary budget. One of the biggest challenges with this year's budget is revenue projections, which were discussed at the last council meeting, but included in tonight's presentation to identify the comparison of revenues estimated to be collected in fiscal year nineteen-twenty, or two thousand nineteen-twenty and fiscal year twenty-twenty-twenty-one compared to our last actuals, which were in two thousand eighteen-nineteen. As you can see, all the revenue sources have drastic reductions for a total of a negative twelve point seven percent, or roughly three point two million in fiscal year twenty nineteen-twenty, and a negative eleven point seven one percent, roughly three million, in twenty twenty-twenty-one. The revenue projections provided were developed in consultation with several of our consultants, economic forecasts, and a review with historical trends. The historical transfer in and out of the general fund slide is included because it's important to note how some restricted funds are transferred into the general fund to cover staff administrative costs for projects. Also, a large amount of the general fund gets transferred out for various funds assigned to specific project equipment and bond repayments. Since two thousand fifteen-sixteen, the city has transferred into the general fund two point two million from special funds for reimbursement of administrative costs, has transferred out four point three million towards paying off the outstanding civic center bond, and has transferred out roughly fourteen million to fund various street and park projects, equipment, along with supplementing the landscape district fund. The funded projects and equipment during this time include the downtown revitalization project, foothill bridge widening project, Golden Hills Road realignment, San Diego Boulevard, San Dimas Avenue, pavement preservation and storm drain maintenance costs, Viavertie Playground equipment, Marshall Park project, Pioneer Park equipment, and median projects. The major equipment purchases included the telephone and computer equipment upgrades in the city, new boom and dump trucks, new CalSense irrigation controllers, and two-way radio system. As previously mentioned, we are in unprecedented times, and unless otherwise directed by council, we'll need to utilize emergency reserves to continue to provide the services, projects, and quality infrastructure to the community. This slide illustrates the city's reserve levels in two thousand eighteen-nineteen at eighty-two percent of the general fund operating expenditures. Given the projected decrease in revenues and recognized decrease in some service program areas due to the effects of COVID-19, the reserves are projected to be at seventy-two percent at the end of fiscal year two thousand nineteen-twenty. In the preliminary budget presented to you tonight, there's a couple scenarios. If only operation and maintenance was included, no projects, the reserve level would drop to sixty-four percent. If operation, maintenance, and all projects that are included in this budget were included, reserves would be at a fifty-five percent. If we presented only the operation and maintenance with no projects in the emergency budget I mentioned before, the other budget that we're not presenting tonight, the reserve level would be at sixty-six percent. However, this does include some big cuts, one of which I'm sure Hector will address in his presentation, is the potential closure of the rec center due to ongoing maintenance and substantial costs that go along with that. So those have been looked at in our emergency budget. And lastly, if we present the full emergency budget, which includes critical projects, maintenance and operation costs, and projects that were identified by the directors as critical to our infrastructure, the reserve would be at sixty-four percent. The main point of this slide is to illustrate that we are in an emergency and a portion of reserves can be proposed to be used. Direction from council on the amount of which we use reserves is very important in moving forward to finalizing the budget. And hopefully, staff can get some direction tonight on that.
Brad, I'm just going to say for what it's worth, I'm probably not going to feel comfortable giving any direction tonight. I haven't had an opportunity to really digest this, as was mentioned earlier. So I personally, I don't know what council's desire will be at the end of this, but I probably would want to continue this next week and have the opportunity to fully digest what you're presenting and understand the numbers, because it's a lot of information in a very short period of time.
I have a question for Brad, an overall question. So on the last slide that you had, where you had the various percentages in a chart form, what, so was that next to the last column, the amount of general fund expenditures? Is that what that was?
The next?
In the previous slide.
Yes, the one that I talked about, the percentage of reserves that would be left?
Yeah.
Yes, that is the general fund expenditures.
Okay, and my only question that I'm trying to understand, Brad, was in the, yeah, that's the slide we're talking about. Is that first column, like the second item, funding new projects in landscape district, and that number is like lower than the general fund operating expenses? What does that mean?
That is actually, that second to last is actually the amount of general fund reserves that would be left if we funded all of the projects, O and M costs, and landscape district that are in this full budget.
Got it. Okay, that's in the full, so it's the full, all of these are, you know what? Let me frame a question and ask it when I can articulate it better. But, well, that helps a lot, though, just knowing that last column is a reserve. I wasn't picking up on that, so thank you.
I really wanted to show that where we're at now, projected into this fiscal year, is seventy-two percent. If we don't do any projects that are in this budget right here, just O and M, we'll have fifteen million nine one four in the reserve, which is sixty-four percent. If we do everything that's in this budget, including all of the projects, we'll have thirteen point seven, which is fifty-five percent, left in reserves. In the emergency budget, if we just do operating maintenance and no projects, we'll have sixty-six percent, that were than sixteen million in reserves. So that's kind of how that's laid out.
Thank you. That explains it. Okay, great. Now I can understand the bar chart a little bit better, I think, on the next slide. Thank you.
I have a question here on page six of this, where it says profit and loss in general fund reserve outlook. Underneath, where it says, you have those figures in the brackets, is that the amount of reserves we're using?
Correct.
That's the amount?
Yes. And so, in this slide, it is important to note that, given the current increases in operating and maintenance costs, reserves were already, based on last year's budget, going to be used to cover increasing expenses prior to the COVID-19 effect. And that's what I wanted to show in this slide. This graph illustrates the general fund reserve balance in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three if no new projects were included in the future budget. However, in fiscal year eighteen-nineteen and nineteen-twenty, already include our current approved projects. However, twenty-two-three includes only operating and maintenance costs, which is not sustainable to keep the city in the standard that we'd like. But I wanted to illustrate that even with no projects moving forward, we're dipping into reserves. So long term, this is going to be something that we need to address long term. The next slide, graph illustrates the general fund reserve balance with proposed projects. And as you can see, if we continue the operation and maintenance increases in all the projects identified in this preliminary budget and projects that have been identified in future years out to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, our reserve balance goes down to two hundred and sixteen thousand at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I think we can say this is dead on arrival, right? Yes, but per council direction, we wanted to present you all the projects that are out there and let you guys be fully transparent on what are some of the projects that our directors feel are important to the city. It is also important to remember that these revenues expenditures are projections and have been in many years off. And for this reason, no matter what budget ultimately gets approved, by council, staff would like to bring back a budget update to council in September to identify if the projections were accurate and adjust the budget accordingly. Because right now, they're all projections. Nobody knows when the economy's going to start picking up. So no matter what budget we end up ultimately adopting, I'd really like to bring this back in September and have that discussion, either it's good or worse. But I just want to show how quickly these reserves can be drawn down and how important a new revenue source, the one or the other, is going to be for the success of the city in the future. So now, since I've provided such great news and projections, I want to, our department directors, administrative services manager, they're going to go through each of their department budgets. And I want to highlight the city's executive team, who has worked tirelessly on preparing multiple budgets while continuing to provide vital services and programs to this community during these unprecedented times. I'm very proud of this team's dedication, creative ideas, and effort and leadership. And as we navigate through these difficult times, which I'm sure we're going to feel effects for years to come, it's important to have individuals that are flexible, creative, and dedicated like we have here. So I want to personally thank the department heads. I know we kind of put this together at the last minute so we could get a full picture for the council. It was a lot of work, but I want to thank them personally for all their help. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Ministry of Services Manager, Michael O'Brien, who's going to walk through the administrative services.
I just had a question really quick for Councilman Weber. What are you looking at?
I think that's a good question.
Sure, so I just, so I went forward to page, I believe it's nine on the slide. Just going over the administrative services, I'm sorry, what am I talking here? So this is just basically our org chart for our department. So we're led by the Assistant City Manager/ Director of Administrative Services, and we have our finance and HR component, or our division, along with information technology, public information, and housing. So what we're going to do is just some of the essential functions of our department. We basically manage the, or handle the city management, city clerk operations, human resources, financial management and planning, city attorney, contract management, housing, economic development, information technology, risk management, and public information. So when we go over in a slide in a few minutes the totals or the summary of our expenditures, it's going to include these cost centers, which are detailed in your full budget. But it's basically the cost centers of forty-one-ten, which is the city council budget, forty-one-twenty, which is the city manager budget, forty-one-fifty for administrative services, forty-one-seventy, city attorney, forty-one-eighty, economic development, and forty-one-ninety, general services. Just want to go over some of our accomplishments from this last budget year. We were able to replace all our printers and copiers with, and actually developed an annual cost savings of about twenty thousand by getting rid of our old machines and taking on a new lease and maintenance contract. So that's getting us more efficiency and better production from our printers, but also cutting costs. We did just recently release, this last week, an online bill payment platform where customers can go online and make payments. We're installing a high-definition equipment for our streaming service. We've increased in the past couple of years our interest revenues through diversification and taking advantage of what were increased interest rates at the time. We also just got done refinancing our civic center bond, which will create annual savings in our bond interest costs, which we anticipate, if you factor in the cost of issuance, to be about thirty thousand a year. We enhanced budgeting tools to hopefully project more accurate budgets. We added credit card processing to our parking meters, and clarified by parking meters, I mean the stations where you can buy your overnight parking permits, so the public can now use credit card to make those purchases. We issued over twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-four business licenses, issued six hundred and seventy-four annual parking permits, developed a coyote management plan, increased our social media platform, and expanded our homeless program. So now to the numbers. So in our administrative services budget, you'll see there is an increase from the nineteen-twenty proposed budget going up from one million four eighty-nine thirty-two to one million six oh two nine seventy-two. The reason for that is some reorganization that we've done between ourselves and community development. We've moved our parking compliance operations over to community development, and we've taken on the housing operations. So we included three new staff members into our division and removed the senior code compliance officer over to code, or community development along with the parking enforcement part-timers. With that, though, we do have an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars of administrative revenues that come from Fund Thirty-four, the housing low mod, that comes to help supplement those costs. So net-wise, there's actually a little bit of savings that was generated from separate employees while having to pay that longevity pay. In services and supplies, there is a slight reduction, basically because the election costs are not in this fiscal year. However, there are some anticipated increases in the city attorney fees. But overall, there's a reduction of about twenty-eight thousand seven twenty-five in services and supplies. There is one proposed staffing adjustment. We are putting in this budget to promote the part-time PIO, or Public Information Officer, to a full-time position. The increase in demand to put out more information on a more regular basis is making a need to have someone there every day. So we are proposing that. The additional cost of that promotion from a part-time to a full-time position would be about thirty-six thousand dollars, including salary and benefits.
Michael, I'm sorry, what is that position currently working?
I believe they're working thirty hours a week, so it would add about ten hours a week, so a full day and a couple hours.
Are they working five days a week right now?
Are they working five days a week right now? No.
No, no, they work four days a week on a part-time basis. And they're really, the one is putting out all the public information. They're working on updating the website. In the budget, we are proposing a different website platform as well, because we have had a lot of transparency issues with our old one and access issues. They are working on, with Parks and Rec on the newsletter, recreation guides. They oversee all our social media, Facebook, our Twitter. They're developing the drafts for the press releases that are going out daily during COVID. In the future, given that Michael kind of touched on one of the achievements, is we are updating our hi-def, what's it called, play-out system that'll allow us, for council meetings, streaming being hi-def, but also allow us to remotely Facebook Live or throw onto the TV channel from different events in the community, so she'll be able to go out there and do live interviews, record all that type of stuff, which would, I believe, be a benefit to the community. In plans, I would like her to create an Instagram account, really get out there on multiple platforms, where right now she is limited because she's on a part-time basis.
And how much would that be in total?
It's an additional thirty...
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand to make that position a full-time position.
What is it? Thirty-six thousand to make it a full-time, but what is the position now?
It's a part-time public information officer, so the salary was, with salary and benefits, I think it was about forty-five thousand, so then thirty-six thousand with full-time salary and benefits.
Talking pretty close to eighty thousand?
Yeah, between salary and benefits, with cafeteria plans and PERS and all the things that go along with it. We'll increase it by about that much.
Is that the expectation of that position? Because I thought when we, when this position was created originally, it took some time to see the position and actually produce things that were tangible to the community. And my understanding was then that this person was going to be out in the community, putting out information. But it seemed like for the first several months of this position, that's not what happened. And so, if an additional ten hours a week is, you know, supposedly going to get us to having that person out in the community during the different days and times that these events happen, is that factually going to be the deliverable? Or is that person just going to be in the office, working Monday through Friday, nine to five, and producing content?
No, I, my goal, if she's, has the hours to be, or she's going to, going to, that position is going to be out in the community, at the community events, at different, potentially meeting with, I know economic development's a big thing that's going to be pushed, meeting with those type of individuals, those businesses, being that, that arm that we have in the city manager's office that can reach out and be at those events when, when myself or other staff can't be. And, and with the access to be able to put that stuff on social media and now will be a huge asset and, and reason for it to be at all those events too.
And then when you refer to the website, this is the new website, I guess? So you're talking about a third website, I guess, since my term, that you would be transitioning to for all those reasons you discussed earlier?
Yes, so we got, we have a quote here for a, a different website platform. Unfortunately, the one that we're using now, WordPress, does not allow for easy access, easy updates. And we've had a lot of, not a lot, some complaints that people have a hard time finding things on the website when they get uploaded. So these new website platforms are just a lot more transparent, accessible, ADA compliant, everything else. So that's, that's one of the reasons. You're right, prior to me being here, I don't know the whole history. They had a website, they, it kind of got updated, but kind of band-aided to what we had before, same type of platform. This is more as, as a, is a state-of-the-art, the, the new platform that all the different cities are using right now. Where the system we're using now is, is pretty archaic.
Brad, I have, I have a question. So on the website, it definitely needs the upgrade that you're talking about and, you know, the ability to search a little bit more productively. In, in these tough times though, you know, I just wonder, it'd be interesting to know how much that's actually going to cost. I know it's in the budget, but I want to see how, how much it costs. And just from experience, sometimes, you know, consultants come in and they charge you a ton of money. And I'm sure it's worth it, but on the other hand, it'd be interesting to see, you know, what we're getting for our money and then really vet that before we sign up a, a contract. The other thing is, another comment was, I just wanted to also echo what Ryan said. I think if I understood correctly, in a, it was a little unclear what, what everybody said, but it sounded like Nicolet or somebody's going to be out in the community at events and maybe posting them on social media as they happen. Was, was that sort of the idea, that transitioning to a full-time position?
Yes, yes, that is the idea. And the, the reason we have the, the website in the budget is proposed at roughly thirty, thirty thousand dollars of what is in there. We have gotten quotes from multiple website platform providers. So we would, we would go out to bidding, it could come in lower than that. But that is, that is the cost to convert our, all of our existing content to a new platform, new, new look, new feel, which I, I think would be a benefit. And again, you're right, this, these are decisions that we need to have with, with our budget. We, we're making a, a budget for what all the directors felt would be a benefit to the community and then we'll come back after we get some feedback from you guys on what you feel like is important, what's not. And we will revise this budget because we are in a, in a, an emergency and a, a rough time right now. So, that's the reason why it is in there, in, in the position.
Okay.
All right, I, I just will say that over the last few months, since Nicolet's been out in, in the, in the field and along with the COVID thing, with the press releases and everything, I've had many, many comments talking about, you know, the, the work that she has been doing and providing with the photos and things like that. So, a lot of people, you know, feel like they're getting a real solid product from the city because of what she's doing. So, I'm not, you know, I don't want to downgrade that in any way, shape or form. I think she's doing a pretty good job at, at that.
I appreciate that. And we've gotten calls from other residents in different communities, city employees in different cities that actually check our, our, our press releases that go out daily and they've, they've been really complimentary of, of our PR, our press that's going out.
All right, we're ready to continue on. So this next summation regards our general services. And when we talk about general services, what we're basically talking about is those things that don't have to necessarily be targeted at one division. It's really affects every department. So we kind of bundle this up in what we call our general services cost center. This includes things like our audits, our computer software, maintenance, equipment maintenance for our copiers or, or printers and the machines, employee benefits, our general and property insurance, operations of our cable channel, newsletters that go out, our internet, phone maintenance costs, Wi-Fi, our GIS system licenses, those type of things are what you'll see going through these accounts. Basically, there's a total increase in this next budget from the prior one, about three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. And just to kind of give you an idea of what is causing those increases, some of the main factors, our purse costs are looking to go up about a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars over the prior year. Our general and property insurance will go up about forty-nine thousand. We have, like Brad mentioned, the budget for updating our city website, about thirty thousand. We also are hoping to do some enhancements to our cybersecurity to continue to try to protect our, our vital information. That's going to be about twenty-five thousand estimated cost. We are looking to automate with our Laserfish system to try to go more paperless, do more authorizations and signings through an automated process. So that's part of that. That's about fifteen thousand benefits. With the proposed staffing, there would be, that we'll see throughout this, this presentation, there'd be about seventy thousand in additional benefit costs, mostly for cafeteria, which is what we use to pay for health insurance costs. Credit card processing fees, there's a little bit of adjustment. Parks and Rec is looking to change from authorized dot, or not, sorry. From, um, from their current, active, active net, thank you, from their current software to Civic Rec. And with that, we'd be using the merchant processing company that we use for our other credit card transactions. So instead of that cost being shown under the active net and recreation, it's been added to our merchant fees. So what they would normally be charging in process fees for that account is now being shown here. So that's initial twenty-five thousand over what was previously done. And then that, that's pretty much that, that's it. So equipment purchases, these are just kind of ones that aren't generally to one department, but computer desktop equipment, just for in case there's breakdowns and we need to make replacements. So this could either be right on budget or, or really below it, but we put aside twelve-thousand-seven-hundred dollars just to make sure we have money to cover those type of expenses that may come up. Parks and Rec and Public Works have been working together on trying to find a service order and asset management software system where they can, you know, when we have a call for service, we can track when it was received, when our crew went out and fixed it, when it was repaired, and then informing the resident that, that made the, the request to let them know that it was completed. Also with asset management, we're talking things like, you know, having a plan together of when we're going to change all the light bulbs or when we're going to, you know, do maintenance on vehicles or maintenance on streets. Just basically a big system to have that all incorporated in there, so we can easily track and, and manage our assets throughout the city.
And then, just if I could add on, on to that, the asset management, the reason, one of the other reasons, just to kind of simplify that system is if, if we have an asset, say a, a drinking fountain out there that we have had to do multiple repairs on, ten different repairs, we can quickly assess with this system, should we continue to do repairs or should we just replace that, that asset? So we can analyze and have analytics behind our decisions on, on replacing infrastructure versus repairing infrastructure. So that, that's part of what that tool would provide, and why it's being proposed. Sorry, Michael.
No, no problem. And then for telephones or cellphone replacement is really what that is. Eighty-two-hundred, we're setting aside for that. And then we have a program we started with some of our vehicles a few years ago, which was a lease to own. So we have eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifteen dollars that we have to continue to pay until that, that lease is completed and then we officially own the vehicle. So I believe there's about one more year past this one of payments to be made and then that'll be completed. So in total, the equipment purchases that we've listed on our Fund Seventy is about a hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. And that concludes mine, and then I'll pass it on to Andy for Police Services.
Good evening, council, residents and the city staff. The, uh, sure, cool. As you know, the public safety budget is a primary component of the, of the city budget. So this will necessarily be just a very high-altitude view of, of the budget. You know, our essential functions are pretty well-known and you, you might look at this and it would come out kind of look to be our, our mission statement. Pretty, pretty well-established what those, what those functions are. It's obviously not all-inclusive, but all those things are important. So in your review of the budget, I'd ask you to just consider those things. A couple of, of things that I put in here just to, to highlight some of the things that have been our goals and things that we'd like to continue. On the traffic citation side, it's, it's kind of a sensitive issue sometimes. Traffic is never a, traffic tickets is never a popular item with, with a lot of people. But keeping in mind that there's a direct correlation between our traffic enforcement and injury collisions, I think it's significant to show that, that our citations are up slightly and our, our traffic collisions are, are down significantly over the last three years. That was kind of one of my goals as a, as a new captain here at the station, and it seems to be having some effect. To that end, we have also purchased some replacement laser and radar equipment and that did come out of a, a part of the budget allocated by the, by the council for equipment purchases. Response times continue to be, I would say historically low and probably very respectable. I, I don't know exactly how they compare to surrounding agencies, but I think they're, they would be pretty good. Obviously, these are not the case for, for every response, but it's a, it's an accurate reflection of a full year of average response times. Arrests have been fairly consistent the last three years, even with the effects of Prop forty-seven and things. And our calls for service have been pretty consistent, about, about a thousand calls more this year than last year. Staffing levels at the station itself, which I, I know doesn't directly affect the, the city staffing, it is something that, that we're normally required to cover with, with overtime or do without. And we've done, I'm, I couldn't be happier about what our staffing levels are now. We did purchase and install the cameras at Pioneer Park that we discussed. Those should be in service soon. We're working out the, the technical details and granting access to just the, the, the the few people that need to have access. ALPR is automated license plate readers. We have, we now have two cars in the city that, that, that have that equipment. Those are, are five thousand dollars per year per car. It's a, you know, for the folks that are familiar with what those do, it's a, it's a great boon for, for identifying criminals, not only immediately when a car is encountered, but also for crime investigations. And then from a liability standpoint and a practicality standpoint, we're dealing more and more with mentally ill people on the, on the street. And so we have had a lot of, a lot of deputies go through crisis intervention training this year. This is just a, a main overview. I'll just talk about the, the main, that first line there and then turn it over to Brad. That does not reflect any change in service level. It's essentially the same number of deputies in patrol and on the CAT team and, and all of our detectives. Those numbers have remained the same. Any of the increases are based on increase in the liability trust fund fees and the overall auditor controller estimate that, that sets the contract city rates. So, other than that, I will turn it over to Brad, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Andy. In that first, the first line, the public safety contracts have gone up five-point-six percent across the board for, for the Sheriff's Department, and that is included in this budget. The liability trust fund is up, has gone up eleven percent. And then the bigger item that I want to talk to in this, in this slide is our services and supplies, which includes our Inland Valley Humane Society contract. The inland, Inland Valley Humane Society revamped their billing model this year, or proposed to revamp their billing model, which decreased their guaranteed revenue that they gave the cities for animal-related fees. Their new gross cost revenue model would increase our annual cost from our net cost of a hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, so a ninety, ninety-four-thousand-dollar increase. However, in, in the, in the general, what I get from Inland Valley Command is that they can't guarantee the revenues. They've been continually not receiving that and having to make up with different types of funding or offsetting our lost sunk costs with other agencies. So they're planning on proposing a new model, but given the current financial situation, member states including, including us had concerns about this increase. And to help reduce the cost for the next year, possibly the year after that, the board approved an alternative that would only increase our cost by two-point-nine-six CPI increase, which is about forty, four-thousand-six-hundred. However, the, the catch is to take advantage of this alternative, all the cities that are up for renewal, which includes Claremont, Laverne, Glendora, Montclair, Chino, Diamond Bar, Ontario, Pomona and us, would need to increase two different fees on our fee structure. The first being unaltered rate for dogs. We currently charge forty-five dollars for a license. They want to increase it to a hundred dollars. A late renewal for dog license from thirty-five to sixty and late application fee for new dog license from thirty-five to sixty dollars. What Inland Valley is trying to do and what a lot of their cost is to reduce the pet overpopulation, which is why they're encouraging the, the Spain neutering of pets. So that's what they've proposed to us, and I'd like to get some feedback from, from council on if, the other caveat is all these cities have to agree to increase their fees. And I've talked to at least five of them and they said they're moving forward with the fee increase to take advantage of the, the reduction in, in the contract cost, which for us would be about ninety-four thousand dollars. However, I don't know, I haven't been in fee discussions or related to the, the animal fees. So I wanted to bring that to you and get some feedback on if you guys, if you guys are okay with, with the fee increase, we'll bring back that fee increase at our next meeting. However, the Inland Valley Command wants answers from these cities on if, if that's doable or not.
So, so what's our cost if, if we don't, if we do not agree to the?
The fee increase? It would be two-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand would be our...
What is it if we, if we do?
If we do, our, our cost would be a hundred-and-sixty, sixty-one thousand.
I can just say one thing. If any of the conversations that I had, it's nine and ten o'clock this morning, from the general public is an example of what's going on, I, I got a feeling you'd have quite a few residents saying, "Don't do anything," because they're very upset and annoyed with, with the service that they're getting from inland. And, you know, they are actually just talking about rudeness on the phone. So, I, I think that needs to be, you know, conveyed to their management, because people, you know, I've received at least three, four... I received at least three, four calls this morning for just poor service, and, you know, generally, you know, what do you want us to do?
I agree with the mayor that I've heard nothing but negative feedback regarding services from Inland Valley Humane Society, and they don't respond, and they don't respond in a timely manner. I'm also struggling with the fact that we had a number of community members here with their coyote concerns, and there really wasn't a good answer from the Humane Society. I mean, they came to the table and I appreciated that, but it seems wild to me to think that we potentially still have this coyote issue out in the community, and then we're going to have people pay, you know, what, a hundred dollars now? I mean, that's more than half of what they were, right?
This is for unaltered, so, so dogs that aren't spayed or neutered?
Right, so someone who had like a, a, AC or AKC champion pet that they wanted to compete with, those are the people that basically would have, a kennel club type of pet would be who this is, right?
Yes.
Yeah, show dogs, stuff like that.
Is that the only fee increase that was unaltered?
It's, on, on, their goal is to get more pets spayed or neutered, to decrease the over, because their, their, their cost is when they have to take, when they take these pets in and house them. There's, there's basically three, it's unaltered rate for dog license from forty-five dollars to a hundred dollars, late renewal for dog license, so if you get a, don't renew it, from, there was a late fee for thirty-five dollars, they want to move that to sixty to encourage people to, to register their pets, and the late application fee for new dog license from thirty-five to sixty dollars. Those three fees, and that's what they, the, Inland Valley says they can, that's a big cost for them, so they won't have as much cost for our service, and they can, they can give us a lower rate if we increase these fees. And they generate revenue from these, these fees, they, they offset our cost.
Well, I can, I can certainly live with the increases, I think especially for unaltered animals, that's the big problem, that's why we have so many, animals are euthanized, because people, they don't alter them and then they just expand.
Correct, that, that, sorry, John?
Could I make a comment on that?
Yeah, John.
So, so my comment is that, that, that's way too big of a, steep of a hike in, in all the fees. I don't know if I've heard of a late fee of sixty dollars anywhere for anything, I, I don't know, but, so that's, that's kind of, kind of high, and when you raise the fees, so, so I think it's just too high, period, but when you raise the fees like that, you really discourage people from licensing their dogs altered or, if they're increasing the altered, of the unal, the altered as well as the unaltered. You just discourage people from licensing the dogs, so it defeats the purpose. And so, they, they need to do a better job, I, I think, with the tools they have or have new tools, but, but that's, I mean, a hundred dollars is just out there, in my opinion.
Are the fees the same in every city?
They're proposing that these, those, those cities that I named, they want the fees to be, I don't know what their actual fee, I don't know if they're at forty-five, I'd imagine they're a little bit higher, because we're, we tend to be on the low end of fees, but they, I can probably guarantee that they're not at a hundred and sixty dollars, and that's why they're requesting them to go up to those, those amounts.
No, what, what I meant is that will every city have the same fee? I mean, and?
Yes, Clare, if, if they all agree, if, and that's what they're asking, it's all or nothing, Claremont, Laverne, Glendora, Montclair, Chino, Diamondbar, Ontario, Pomona, and us would all have the hundred dollars and sixty dollar fee, is what they're requesting.
Have they done any outreach, like, to anyone about this?
Not that I know of, because I only heard about this, this, earlier this week.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, like, number of the folks, especially the equestrian folks, you know, people that have these dogs, the collies and things like this, I just, I, I agree with John, it's a significant increase to the fee, and I, you know, I'd, I'd almost propose they go park up at the dog park and start pitching their fee to everybody up there and see how that goes over. I mean, I understand the drawback in terms of the expense potentially to the city, but like the mayor said earlier, they want more fees, then I think they need to up their game in terms of their service and customer service and response times. I mean, I don't think people feel like they're getting service, it's like we have an animal control, Humane Society, but you call them for a possum in your, your, the roof of your garage, and they basically tell you good luck. I mean, it's, it's wild, you know, and the coyotes, there wasn't a lot of answers. I don't know, I just, I haven't yet heard of something where somebody has been thumbs up about the response they received, so, yeah.
Okay, so what, what I'm hearing is, in, what is included in our budget already, because I just got this information on, earlier this week, we have the, the new proposed cost in, in our budget right now, but I will definitely relay your guys' comments and, and our residents' concerns, thank you for sharing them, to Inland Valley Humane. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our Community Development Director, Henry Nell, who's going to present his department.
Thank you, Mr. McKenney. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The Community Development Department is, includes three divisions, the Planning Division, the Building and Safety Division, as well as the Code Compliance Division. Before I get into the essential functions of the Community Development Department and our proposed budget, I wanted to inform the City Council and the public that there are four guiding principles that I've been trying, since I've been hired, to instill into our department, and those four guiding principles include achieving excellence through teamwork and through, it's essential and to the success of any organization, including ours, that we collaborate and we communicate. We need to be committed, committed to the community, which is providing exceptional customer service, not only to the external customers, but to the internal, and this is done by committing to take the extra effort to help solve and resolve problems and to help facilitate any projects or any concerns that the public or Council may have. We want to make sure that we do the right thing the right way, and in doing this, we want to review our processes and try and streamline those processes to be more efficient, but at the same time, we do not want to ever compromise our integrity. And the lifeline in any organization is our employees, and to that effect, training and leadership is, is vital, and I want to make sure that our Community Development Department is, staff is trained, and I want to empower my employees to take ownership and pride of their job, not only to support one another, but to the community. With that, some of the essential functions of Community Development includes improving the community while preserving our small-town character. Community engagement, we want to have transparency in our processes and projects. We entitle and process development projects from the entitlement process, plan check, inspections, and finals. It includes advanced planning, these are our guiding, the city's guiding documents, such as the General Plan, which includes our housing element, the Development Code, and the future downtown specific plan. In building, our central function is to uphold the federal, state, and local building codes. And in my short time here, I know the City of San Dimas has a lot of community pride, and with that is, a key component of that is code compliance, or I'd like to say, community preservation, and property maintenance and making sure that people are maintaining their properties are vital for that, as well as parking enforcement. Some of the major accomplishments in this current year, Community Development's either been approved or conceptually approved for two grant fundings. These include the SB Two Grants and the Local Early Action Plan, which is a LEAP Grant, for a total of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. This will help assist in funding the housing element update, the objective design standards, as well as our proposed downtown specific plan. In this past fiscal year, we've received approximately six hundred planning applications, this includes conditional use permits, development plans, tree removals, et cetera. In addition, we've either in the process or completed various municipal code text amendments, including the SP Twenty-three Moratorium, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and the large family daycare ordinance. One of the major projects that we entitled this past fiscal year is the twelve-unit subdivision that's located on Walnut Avenue. In Building and Safety, we have received approximately four hundred plan checks and issued seven hundred and eighty building permits and have completed over forty-one hundred inspection types. We've also started the construction of four major projects, the Memory Care Building, located in Via Verde, and three residential communities in Saddle Creek, Cody Lane, and Commercial Street. The Code Compliance Department has either opened or has ongoing cases that includes approximately eleven hundred cases. We successfully resolved nine hundred and twenty-five violations. As previously mentioned, the, we reorganized the parking enforcement to be located under Community Development from administration. We initiated and completed the community outreach to our downtown area to help clean up our alley maintenance or alleyways, and then we initiated and will hopefully complete soon the formalized tree pruning standards. Some of the major future objectives, as I previously mentioned, the housing element update and the downtown specific plan are vital for our organization, not only in Community Development. For the downtown specific plan, as everyone knows, the Gold Line Station, which is coming, and the state legislation that's coming down to increase housing production around high transit stations, it's vital that we get the downtown specific plan initiated and completed. Also, in the short time I've been here, I've heard a number of times from Council, as well as the community, the, one of their main goals is to try and revitalize and re-energize our downtown area, and the downtown specific plan is that guiding document that will help facilitate in completing that vision for our downtown area. In a perfect world, as Brad had mentioned, because of the COVID-nineteen, I would have liked to have proposed the comprehensive general plan update, and in the future, also a comprehensive development code update. These have been needed for a number of years and hasn't been accomplished, but the cost for, the product and the cost that I've received estimations, estimations for, for the comprehensive general plan update is about two to two and a half million dollars. With the current conditions, my main, my two main projects are the housing element and the downtown specific plan, because the downtown specific plan will facilitate the, the downtown area and the revitalization of that area, and with that, we've received grant funding, as I said, from specific grants to help fund that. In the future, one of my major goals is actually to collaborate with the other divisions and departments within the city, and to try and see if there's additional grant funding that we can collaborate with Parks and Rec, Public Works, as well as Community Development, to see if there's any funding to help fund and pay for the general plan comprehensive update. In addition, we've been looking at trying to standardize and streamline our processes with the goal of trying to reduce our review times by, at a minimum, twenty-five percent. Some of the entitlements that we've completed, or we're trying to complete in the, in this fiscal year are three residential developments, that includes Amelia Gladstone and St. George, which are six-unit subdivisions, as well as the Two-Nine-Nine East Foothill subdivision, which is a proposed sixteen-unit subdivision. Some of the construction projects, major construction projects that are either under construction or looking, we're looking to get permits for, issued for, are Brusada, which is located north of Foothill and Cataract, the Walnut Development that I previously mentioned, Max's Restaurant located on Foothill, as well as Dixie Rose Restaurant on Bonita, and a new pizza restaurant located on Village Court, which is looking to locate at the former Cassington Cleaver Site. That's the John Begin Project, the twelve, yeah. In Community Development, we have two cost centers, Forty-three Oh Eight for Community Development and Forty-three Eleven for Building and Safety. So the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2021, majority of our approximately two million dollar budget is one point five million, is that, is for salary employees. From the previous fiscal year, you'll notice in nineteen twenty, there was a reduction from about one point five million to one point four million for this proposed fiscal year, and that's mainly due to me taking over, over my position from my President Assessor's position, and he was the Assistant City Manager for Community Development. So with that, there was a reduction of approximately eighty thousand dollars. The, approximately six hundred thousand dollars for service and supplies, I just wanted to note, the two major items that, major projects that are within this budget are the downtown specific plan and the objective design standards. If you take those two projects out, that revises our budget to approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which would have been a sixty percent reduction. Those two projects, like I mentioned, were majority funded by grants, as well as their one-time costs, but without those, there would have been a sixty percent reduction, and if you take those out of our department total, it reduces that to one point six million or a eleven percent reduction from the previous fiscal year. And that completes my presentation.
Is there any possibility that those grants, due to the circumstances throughout the state and throughout the county, the financial prediction that everybody's in, is there any possibility that those grants would be pulled back?
Not that I've, I've heard, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The Public Works Department consists of fifteen full-time employees and two part-time employees, and we're divided into essentially three divisions. The gray is, is our Streets Maintenance Division, the blue is our Engineering Division, and then the yellow is our Administration or Environmental Services Division. The Department currently has three vacancies within it, which is about twenty percent of our allocated staffing positions. So our essential function, one of our primary functions is to maintain about three hundred and thirty million dollars in public infrastructure. So this infrastructure includes roads, hundred and twenty-two centerline miles of streets, hundred miles of sewer pipeline, forty miles of storm drain mainlines with over nine hundred catch basins, as well as city streetlights, traffic signals, and street signs. Our maintenance functions are set up as routines as much as possible to be cost-effective and to ensure public safety, and as an example, all of our thirty-six traffic signals in the city have monthly, biannual, and annual maintenance services, each with varying levels of complexity. In addition, an emergency maintenance service will be performed if a power outage occurs or other report of malfunction is received. Public Works also schedules and manages capital improvement projects to construct new infrastructure or reconstruct and repair existing infrastructure that needs more than just routine maintenance. We typically complete between three to five million in capital improvement projects each year. And in the screen, you can see one is Via Verde Avenue, which is scheduled for, for next year, or proposed for next year. Another of Public Works' functions is to ensure the public's safety as they use the city's infrastructure to move through their day. as they use the city's infrastructure to move through their day. In conjunction with Parks and Recreation's facility and landscape maintenance crews, we have employees that are on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Our crews provide traffic control for emergencies, remove down trees or other obstructions that block the street or sidewalk, and have worked to assist with other emergencies such as flood protection.
You said that you're going to redo Via Verde.
Yes.
What about a small part of Via Verde in LA County? Is that going to be done also?
We are actually coordinating with LA County to get that done. And, and they have indicated that they would like to, to have that completed. That was pre-COVID-nineteen, but, so, but we are working with them to get that completed. We work with our residents and the school district and the sheriff to address traffic safety concerns. We have streets with twenty-five thousand or more vehicles per day and streets that have three hundred. As our population and traffic patterns change, we have to implement and adjust the tools we use to provide our public safety. This means learning and keeping up with new regulatory standards and requirements. Increasingly, a larger and larger part of our staff time gets dedicated to meeting a growing number of regulatory compliance requirements from primarily state agencies. Several of the agencies with requirement compliance are, are listed, but an example would be the city's trash, trash contract with waste management. There are several assembly bills that require stricter mandates for recycling inert materials as well as organic or food waste. Implementation of ordinances and tracking methods required to bring the city into compliance with these assembly bills has been and continues to be challenging and time-consuming. Couple of examples of the assembly bills, AB three forty-one requires mandatory commercial and multifamily recycling. AB eighteen twenty-six requires commercial and multifamily organics recycling. And SB thirteen eighty-three requires residential organics recycling. So those are some of the programs that we're going to have to implement, implement in the next year or two. Another example is on our stormwater compliance. We regularly spend over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually just to meet compliance requirements, water quality testing and, and filing of reports. Another service provided by Public Works includes management of the public right-of-way. We manage all permits in the right-of-way, which includes utility and new developments to make sure that the work conforms with city standards and municipal code requirements. For instance, the Saddle Creek development, which Henry discussed earlier, it's, the development that's on Sandy Miss Avenue, south of Allen Avenue, has twenty-eight homes, had one point six million dollars worth of public improvements that Public Works reviewed and inspected. The Brusada development, which is north of Foothill, north of Cataract Avenue, had over ten million dollars in improvements that involve Public Works' review and inspection. Those projects are ongoing and involve inspections. Public Works also oversees the maintenance yard facilities and fuel management operations. We work with the other departments to provide comprehensive fleet management and order and outfit new vehicles for the city. While the fiscal year is not quite finished yet, we do plan on completing or being in construction with five point two million dollars worth of projects. I've listed some of the projects here, which are Avenida Entrada, the Bonita Traffic Signals Synchronization Project, or Slurry of Zones One and Two, which is north of the two-ten freeway. And we've installed EV charging stations at multiple locations in the city. And we should be going into bid shortly on a Commercial Street alley. Of note, of the five point two million dollars in capital improvement projects, one point seven million is coming from grants, so we will be reimbursed for one point seven million dollars. For fleet purchases, we purchased and outfitted three pickup trucks and one backhoe this year. We've also worked with Edison on a project to convert thirty-one hundred streetlights to LED lamps, which we will bring approximately twenty thousand dollars in savings in electricity each year in addition to being a green technology. We've received about three hundred calls for service and filled approximately twenty-four hundred potholes. We've installed approximately a hundred and fourteen thousand linear feet of striping or pavement markings and repaired about five hundred locations of sidewalk, totaling about twelve thousand square, square feet. When we look at our infrastructure inventory, signs are a small proportion of the cost, but we have a huge impact on the serviceability and safety of our streets. We replaced four hundred and eighty-five regulatory signs and a hundred and twenty-eight street name signs. We've also issued two hundred and seventy-five encroachment permits for both, for work within the public right-of-way and performed over nine hundred inspections. Also, I do want to mention during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, our staff worked with utilities to issue critical permits and continued to provide inspections as requested. We developed new protocols to minimize risk to our employees, yet maintaining services for our residents. One of the procedures developed by our street superintendent was a vehicle disinfection procedure. We also created safety kits for each vehicle with masks, gloves, and Tyvek suits. We continue to work with waste management to haul away an increase in debris that has been deposited in the right-of-way through the COVID-nineteen pandemic. I am proud of the Public Works' response to the pandemic and believe it shows the quality and dedication of our employees. These are our responsible general fund cost centers. Also on here, I've included Fund Twelve, which is our infrastructure fund. We have several capital projects in, in the past have been funded out of Fund Twelve, as well as we, we have some of our ongoing maintenance projects funded from, from Fund Twelve. However, due to the economic impacts from COVID-nineteen, Public Works has moved as many projects as we can to the restricted funds wherever possible. So these are our, our salaries in services and supplies costs. Much like planning, our annual salary has gone down due to personnel turnover. We're, we're down about eighty-eight thousand a year because of longevity and, and the number of personnel. The number of personnel has not changed, actually, from what was proposed. And this includes, the eighty-eight thousand dollars in reduction includes having all of our positions funded. Services and supplies, so you know that, some of there is some asphalt. It's electricity for the, the maintenance yard and some consultant services for stormwater management. Capital out latest year is for wash rock maintenance and catch basin maintenance within the yard. Here's our proposed list of capital improvement projects for the, for next fiscal year. The majority of our Public Works' projects are paid for by restricted funds. These funds are typically audited to ensure that they are spent only on authorized work. Many of the funds, though, are sales tax-based and are subject to financial impacts from the, from the down economy. For instance, the gas tax and Fund Two and Fund Seventy-seven are based on taxes from gas sales. And they will be impacted in this economy.
No, is Covina Boulevard in the county?
No, Covina Boulevard is from the fifty-seven freeway to Arrow Highway. So there's a, so actually, you'll have, that section of Covina Boulevard, it skips, we, we did the section in front of the high school about ten years ago. And then Badio Street is, is funded on here as well. So that whole section of roadway will be, will be completed.
So, so let's look at Via Verde, look at Covina. What, out of our, out of our funding, how much are each one of those going to cost us if we went forward with them?
I'm sorry, if we went?
If we went forward with these projects, what's it actually physically going to cost us?
Okay, so that project involves, we are working with the county to try to include some of their projects. If, if county doesn't come through and, and, then it'll probably be around two point three million.
Out, out of our pocket.
Out of our pocket?
Sorry, if I could just make one confirmation of the statement. If we're talking, Emmett, are you specifically talking about general fund revenue or source of revenues to fund these projects, or are you just talking about general costs?
No, no, general fund project.
Yeah, so what she's presenting here, none of those projects from Fund Two over would take any general fund money. These would be paid for with the funds that are generated from those restricted funds. Now, the Fund Twelve, the Badio, was actually budgeted this year, but there is, that's mostly funded with STPL funds, so other, other grant sources are going to be paying for that. And the Gold Line relocation, the hundred and fifty, would be reimbursable from Metro, so.
Via Verde and Covina would basically cost us nothing, you know, as far as general fund money.
Right, so we're looking at these projects being able to be completed without any general fund revenues being, or reserves being used to complete these. But we would be draining these restricted funds quite significantly by completing these.
Super, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on that, if I could. So, this is John, and so I'm looking at the line item budget, page twenty-three, which is the gas tax fund, zero-two, and it's an example of a fund that, as you're saying, you might use. So, you know, saying it's not going to cost general fund any money is a little, little like saying, oh, it's not going to cost Emmett any money, but it's going to cost me a lot of money. And if you look at the balance that we had left in Fund Zero-Two, kind of like a reserve, or what's left over, let's put it that way. If you look back two years ago, it was over two million dollars. And, no, one, no, one point two million, sorry. So, and then at the end of this current year, we're looking at about having six hundred thousand dollars left over. At the end of next fiscal year, because of various projects, we're looking at a balance of three hundred thousand dollars. So although those funds are restricted to street projects, you're still paying money for them, and it means that you don't have that money for future expenditures. And so that's just something to realize. I'm not saying it's a bad idea to spend that money now, because as Sherry and everybody would say, it's good to get these street projects done, or it's going to cost us more in the long run. So I'm not having that argument. I'm just saying we want to go into it with eyes wide open, that each one of these funds is like that, where we, we are drawing down what we have in them. And so we won't have that money for street projects in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, that kind of thing. But the money just will not be there at all, or, or be a tiny amount. So just, just wanted to lay that out there for everybody to think about between now and next week.
Thanks, John.
That's definitely a consideration. Another consideration is we are drawing these funds down to the point where we are depending on money coming in next year to pay for them. So that's something we have, we'll have to consider when we actually go out, before we go out to bid or come back for award, to make sure that the funds that are coming in are consistent with our projections. So also, I did want to mention that on Fund Twelve, or it's the infrastructure fund, as, as, as Michael mentioned, the one point eight nine seven million is, most of it's coming from STPL funds, which are federal, federal monies that can't be used for, only, it can only be used for street projects, but they'll reimburse and our general fund with, with those STPL money. So about, of that one point eight million dollars that's shown there, about two hundred thousand will actually come from our general fund. And, and part of the requirement for us when we get our SPL monies is we have to have a local match. It's about a twenty percent local match.
That's a great deal.
Okay. So for the funds that are restricted to road repair, we, we receive approximately two point five million a year once administration funds have been transferred out. To maintain our streets at our current condition, we need to spend approximately three million per year. Okay? And if we want to make our streets better, then we have to spend even more than three million. So talk about that in a, in a little bit, in a couple of slides. In past years, council's moved general funds in, into Fund Twelve to pay, help us pay for larger projects. Over the last five years, there's been an average of a little over a million dollars spent on street projects from Fund Twelve. For this past year's budget and for the next year, Public Works has removed most of the capital and projects and non-reimbursed projects from Fund Twelve to try to offset some of the revenue losses from, from the COVID pandemic. So equipment purchases that are proposed, this also comes from fund, well, from the general fund. So Public Works manages the fleet. Two of those trucks are going to a Parks and Rec and, and one is going to Public Works, is what, the ways this worked out. But we are proposing ninety-one thousand in vehicle purchases for the next year. And we have a, a list of all the vehicles. We have forty-two vehicles in the city and a, and a number of tools that are, that we maintain. But the, the vehicle replacement is, we, we have several older vehicles that we're trying to move out of our inventory and replace with newer vehicles. And we have that planned out for about a five, six-year period. So for department changes, Public Works is not proposing any new staffing. What we are requesting in this budget is to fill all our vacancies. Okay, with Gold Line ramping up, the assistant engineer will be able to provide additional inspections and plan checking capability. This position also plays a key role in bidding and managing capital improvement projects. The senior office assistant is a key position that will help us respond to service calls and permit requests. The position also assists in keeping track of our progress with regulatory compliance requirements, especially those concerning solid waste and recycling. The fleet mechanic services the city's fleet, not just Public Works' fleet. The mechanic also maintains most of the smaller tools and equipment used by city's maintenance crews. Without this position, the maintenance crews have to portage their vehicles to get repairs done. They have to keep track of the service schedule and they have to track their own oil changes. So for major goals, well, well, not a goal, the gold line is listed first because of the significant impact it has on our work plan. This is the light rail system, for the audience, this is a light rail system that is proposed for the north side of the city, extending from Glendora through the city's downtown to Laverne. We've had twenty-six plan checks since late December, along with numerous requests for information or meetings. Public Works reviews the Gold Line documents and will inspect the work to ensure compliance with city standards, which are arguably more expensive than what would otherwise be installed. In the end, our residents have to live with what is constructed by the Gold Line. Staff wants to ensure the Gold Line improvements result in the least impact and the best outcome for our Sandy Miss residents. The city primarily has jurisdictions at the Gold Line crossings. There are seven crossings in the city that will be closed over the next sixteen to eighteen months. Although that schedule, that closure schedule has not been approved, but that is a significant amount of work. And even without the closures, well, with the closures, no two adjacent crossings will be closed at the same time, but there will be concurrent work at multiple locations in the city. There's also significant work at Sandy Miss Avenue and Bonita and at Sandy Miss Avenue and Commercial Street, which is off-track improvements. The latest discussion with the Gold Line, and which again is an unofficial schedule, has traffic signal improvements going at Commercial and Sandy Miss Avenue next spring. has traffic signal improvements going at Commercial and Sandy Miss Avenue next spring. The other major impact in the, is the Gold Line has notified the city that they will be acquiring the city's maintenance yard for the Gold Line parking lot. Relocation of the city's maintenance yard will have a major impact on all maintenance and field operations. Finding an alternate yard location will take a significant amount of time and resources. Finally, as the Gold Line will be reclaiming their right-of-way in the park-and-ride lot, this is the parking lot on the west side of Sandy Miss Avenue, just north of Commercial Street. These parking lots services the bus transit patrons. The lot will need to be reconfigured with usable, um, to, to be usable without the right-of-way property. The, the design, the reconfiguration design is in progress, but we still will lose approximately five to seven parking stalls. We'll be moving forward with our capital improvement projects. We are slated right now for 8.6 million in, in CIP projects using primarily restricted funds again. The stormwater grate and filter project, shown on there, will be an ongoing project over the next several years, where we'll install grates and filters in most of the city's 900-plus catch basins. This will improve our water quality and help us meet stormwater permit requirements. We have several arterial roads budgeted for next year. Via Verdi Avenue, Covina Boulevard, and Badio Street are extremely deteriorated and need repair. These streets see each approximately 16,000 to 20,000 vehicles per day. The repairs on these streets will impact a large number of residents and commuters. Wanted to show you a, a slide of our maintenance system, pavement management system. This is a status summary of the condition of the streets within the city. It's, it's a little difficult to read, and I apologize on that. And the up, on the upper left is the actual condition of all the streets within the city. It's a, so we, we have a pavement condition index, what's called, of 58. Okay? The overall trend is that we've been deteriorating, our streets have been deteriorating slightly each year. As a comparison, the PCI, the state average PCI is a 65. The lower we drop on this pavement condition index, typically the more expensive our repairs become. So we wanna try to keep our, our pavement condition in a better, in a higher level. In the center of the graph, is the pavement condition is broken down by the functional class of the street, whether it's arterial collector or residential. The functional class is determined by the number of vehicles traveled on the roadway and also by our general plan. Okay? With next year's projects, we'll increase the PCI of our arterials, which has been our focus over the past couple of years. So these two over here on the left side, right there. Can't get that for you. Over the next couple of years, we'll begin to focus more on residential streets, which is on this side. Most of our residential streets are over 40 years old, and many are in need of repair and not just a slurry coat. We use the pavement management program to provide a guideline to optimize what streets to schedule for repair first. On the right is a, a graphic depiction of, of the pavement management system with, that gives the, uh, pavement condition of every street in the city. While we will be aggressively trying to get grants, or we will aggressively try to get grants to help pay for our street rehabilitation. Just to stay even and stop the downward trend, we need to spend about 3 million a year on pavement rehabilitation. However, to get to a, a better pavement rehabilitation, or pavement condition, say of 70, we would need to spend approximately 4.7 million per year. Okay? And to get a, a pavement condition of 75 would be about 5.4 million. With the projected budget shortfalls, we need to aggressively go after grants to find the gap and, to fund the gap in the 2.5 million we have coming in from restricted funds and the amount needed to bring up our pavement condition index. Another goal of, of Public Works is to enhance, enhance our existing or develop new management systems to optimize our service. We have several systems in place that we use currently. Uh, the pavement management system is one of them. We have also implemented Excel permitting program, which allowed us to operate more affection, more efficiently during the COVID-19 response. Our focus will be on implementing the systems we have and using them to the fullest, as well as incorporating some new systems. For instance, we use about half the capabilities of the Excel permitting system right now. There are online capabilities and reporting capabilities that will help us to be more efficient and better serve our communities. The other major system to implement is the work order asset management system. This was slated for implementation this year, but has been slightly delayed. This will help us see what calls for service we have and what needs we have for maintenance of our infrastructure. It will also make us more efficient in use of crews, and will provide a better tool for budgeting replacement work. I know I've gone on a long time, but I just wanna touch base on the last two items. With a combination of staff turnover and new regulatory requirements, our staff must offici, operate efficiently and keep abreast of changes in regulations. We do that through training, in both external training opportunities as well as internal training. Our goal when sending an employee to a training class is to have them come back and train the rest of the division on what was learned. Training is an important part of meeting the increase in demands and regulations. It also provides a way to develop employees to prepare them for the next level. And then finally, Henry touched on the, the topic, but collaboration. Collaboration is more important than ever. We need to work seamlessly with our other departments to help our community. Whether it is a business or a resident, they have to navigate through these new times filled with regulations and other obstacles. We are here to move them forward and to help them meet the city's standards. This concludes my presentation. The next department will be Parks and Rec.
Sherry?
Yes.
You have three vacancies.
Yes.
Okay. How, how long have each one of them been vacant, your senior office assistant?
So this, the senior office assistant, um, we have not had one. We took over trash from, uh, from administration at, at the turn of the, of the new fiscal year. So that has not been occupied.
Okay. Assistant engineer?
Assistant engineer, um, Brandon Slater was promoted to associate engineer. So he was promoted, I believe, in February.
So it's been vacant for what, two and a half months?
Three months. And the fleet.
Mechanic?
Fleet mechanic's been vacant for, uh, May 15th, since May 15th.
So just a couple of weeks.
I'm sorry, it was April 15th. So he's been gone a month.
It's one month, okay. Okay, thank you. Oh, I did have one extra question, is when we look at, uh, the lighting, on my lighting budget that you showed. The lighting, the lighting district, you showed $510 for lighting projects?
Yes.
What project is that?
So there's the, there's a Via Vic Carol lighting project. It's about 350,000. They have some, uh, it's an LS2, which means we own the, the streetlights. Edison provides electricity. We, we own the streetlights, so we have to go in and, and replace all of the streetlights. They're pretty dilapidated.
Are we talking about the poles?
Yes, the street poles and lamps. And then there's also, um, 160,000 for the decorative streetlights, uh, the nostalgia series in the, in the downtown. It's an ongoing annual project that we try to.
Is any of that money being used for the community parks, or has that already been budgeted?
Yeah, no, that's been budgeted for this year. But, um, yes, this for the, um, Sewick Center Park will be coming, uh, 250,000 from this year's budget, from Fund Seven.
Okay, but 510 will leave for next year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I had a couple of questions.
All right, John.
Okay, uh, first of all, um, I liked that, the pavement condition index dashboard that you showed. And, um, that'd be great to have on the website someplace.
Okay.
But I was, it just, it's a nice view of things and, uh, gives a quick, quick indication of how, how the pavement is doing, or, you know, is improving or slowly unimproving. Um, the second one, I, I did quite understand you, you say the, uh, under the Gold Line, you were mentioning the signal at Sandy Miss Avenue and Commercial.
Yes.
Did I hear, did I hear you say they were going to start working on that next spring?
Yes.
Wow, and when is it going to be actually installed?
Well, are, are the, so they have not given us an official schedule yet, but the discussion was that they were gonna try to do it in March. So they wanna order the poles now to be able to install it in March.
That's great. Now, how much is that costing us?
It is zero. It is part of the Gold Line improvements.
That's nice. Okay, that's great. Um, the last question I had, um, just for the moment anyway, was I, I noticed, um, a line item on the, uh, the, the line item budget, and it was for graffiti removal on page 19. And I noticed that, uh, this year's budget was going to come in at about 66,500, $66,500, which was because we got a new, you know, a new person, a new outfit doing the, the work, and they're doing it, um, a little bit more proactively and everything else. Um, but I thought it was only $10,000 for next year's budget. Is money coming from someplace else, or are we cutting back on that, or what's that all about?
Yes, actually, we're in a transition period. Well, um, Public Works will be doing some graffiti removal on signs, on our own street signs. So that's what that $10,000 is for. And then Parks and Rec will be managing the graffiti removal budget. Uh, and it's in there, it'll be in their cost fund, or cost center.
All right. That, that, that's great to know. And I don't know, and the budget, you know, is very familiar, the way it's laid out, and I, I like it. But, uh, that particular thing, I don't know if there's a way of now indicating that, the budget, just so that people who are looking know that it's moved over to another department, or being shared by another department, something like that.
Okay.
I just, a, a general comment about everything that, you know, moves from one fund to another, or that kind of thing.
Okay, like a differences slide?
Yeah, John, and we can include that in a future, uh, presentation that actually shows. What we're trying to do is get, uh, Parks and Rec manages that graffiti contract, so we wanna get the cost centers in the right, uh, departments. But we could add a, add a slide that shows that it's not even limited from the budget, but moved to where it moved to.
Yeah. Great.
Sherry, just a quick question. How, how is our street sweeping process working by leasing them or hiring, hiring them out?
It appears to be working fine. We, uh, we keep a sweeper on hand, um, so that we don't, we don't incur overtime charges from the, from the, you know, the street sweeper, the contract street sweeper. So if we do have an issue, we, we send one of our crew to do the sweet, street sweeping, just to try to keep the cost down. But it's, it's been, it's been pretty effective.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, this evening with you, to, um, go over and review the Parks and Recreation budget. Before I jump into the slideshow, just like to, just ta, take a minute to make you aware of how, you know, we, we come to our budget, how we arrive, we, what we arrive with numbers, and identifying, you know, where we, we believe that the needs are. So the budget process is more than the preparation of a document that appropriates funds for a series of line items. Good budgeting is a broadly defined process that has managerial, planning, communication, financial dimensions. Parks and Rec uses this process to incorporate our long-term goals. Also, set and establish links to organizational goals. Focus budget decisions on results and outcomes, so it's outcome-based management. Promote effective communication with stakeholders, getting commissions, um, key players involved in, in hearing them, the pulse, what they say and, and what they feel is important. The, um, also, I think my colleagues touched on this, which is to provide developmental opportunities for employees. Now, the, um, this budget proposal captures, uh, those five points noted above in conjunction with the city's mission. So the city's mission is what drives, again, our decision-making process. And if I could just take a, a minute to, uh, go over that, or to just paraphrase some of the city's mission, which is the city council and all city employees are committed to well-maintained facilities and being responsive to the needs of the residents by providing necessary programs. So, um, Henry talked about guiding principles, and Parks and Recreation also has some guiding principles. And those are all noted, uh, along with goals and strategies in your, the budget proposal that was presented to you. So, um, Parks and Rec has different fund sources. One is the general fund. Then there's the restricted funds. So, uh, we, let's talk first, or I'd like to first share with you, uh, the general fund expenditures or budget proposal. So Parks and Recreation has three divisions, which include landscape, landscape maintenance, facility maintenance, and, and recreation services divisions. Altogether, we have approximately, uh, currently, we have 20 full-time staff members. There are 10 regular part-time. And sometimes there, in the summer season, the summer be an exception, uh, we have close to 60 part-time staff. This is just a quick snapshot of what Parks and Rec Recreation does. And then just, you know, we, we have a saying, saying, that is, it just, it doesn't just happen. So there are people that are taking care of these, these tasks, staff, team members, employees of the city of Sandy Miss, who, um, are dedicated individuals, and they, you know, do their best. So last, last year, our budget was about just under $8 million. That included general fund and restricted funds for CIP projects. City has 177 acres of landscape space, which is manicured and maintained spaces. This does not include open spaces like the Northern Foothills, uh, or those, um, parcels of open space above Horse Steve Canyon Park, and even within Horse Steve Canyon Park. So these are areas that we maintain. The Recreation Services Division served about 12,500 people. It is, the data here is, is a couple of years old, and, um, we just had an issue retrieving some of the, the data from the prior year. But, um, we believe that last year, based on the information we have from our aquatics program, which was a stellar, stellar year, that, uh, we exceeded that by far. The other thing is that, uh, Parks and Rec does is we maintain public facilities, which is the civic area, civic center area, the, the, um, Martin House, the Walker House, and other park, uh, restrooms and facilities in, throughout the city. Last year, we, um, the council appropriated about two and a half, 2.8 million dollars for CIP, capital improvement projects. And, uh, this slide here just shows some of the, uh, projects that were done, that are already completed. So you have Lone Hill Park, which has tennis courts before and after. They were resurfaced, uh, and La Dara Sera also before and after, resurfaced. And, um, at the Splex, the JV and Varsity Fields were renovated, and you can see the process going on here. These are some of the projects that are still in process. So La Dara Sera is getting a new playground, um, structure, and it, um, it is. and it, um, it is beautiful. It, uh, it's almost complete. The, uh, first layer of rubber surfacing was put down. So the next will be, the next layer is basically the color. But, um, that should be good to go in, in, in less than a couple of weeks. It'll be, um, ready for, for use. This picture down here is kind of a rendering, and, um, it, uh, that doesn't do anything for it. Doesn't do it any justice. It, it came out really nice. Now, the Civic Center Park here, so you may have noticed that, that equipment is, is now missing. And, uh, we removed it, uh, one for the fact that there are play, our playgrounds, and those amenities were closed due to the order from the county. But you can also see that it was in disrepair here. So we moved it, and this, uh, site will get a, um, twenty-four-piece outdoor exercise equipment and, um, and a shade structure over the top of it. So it can be used at all times of the day. The Arrow Highway median project, which starts at Lone Hill, I'm sorry, starts at Valley Center on the west and works its way through, um, all the way past Walnut Avenue and to the city boundaries. That's this project here. That project began this Monday. And it, it will be completed in roughly sixty, sixty working days. Next is the Via Verdi walking trail, or walking path. Uh, that was broken out into two phases. Phase one has been completed. Uh, they were moving the fence today to begin phase two. This is a picture of the new surface. So this here, this side on the west side is the, this, what was done, actually starts here and goes to this spot right here. So in phase two will be the eastern side of the park, but, um, it also looks, looks great. So some events, obviously, pre-COVID-19 pandemic, we were able to have the Halloween Spooktacular and the Holiday Extravaganza. Both of those events were very well-received. And, um, speaking of the impact that our PIO has had in working and collaborating with, um, Parks and Recreation, the number of Facebook likes for the Halloween Spooktacular, um, so two-hundred-and-fifty-three individuals indicated that they were going, twenty-three-hundred individuals in, indicated that they were interested. Forty-five thousand, almost forty-six thousand people were reached. So big, big, um, out outreach there. The mascot video, which you may recall was that race between the mascots, that got one and a half, one-thousand-five-hundred views. It, um, had an overall reach of twenty-five-hundred people. The Holiday Extravaganza had an overall reach of fifty-six thousand people, with three-thousand-six-hundred people indicating that they were going or interested in going. And, um, the tree lighting itself reached, uh, over a thousand people and five-hundred-eighty views. So those are those two events, and, um, we are very excited about that and looking forward to, uh, in collaboration with, um, other groups and, uh, in the city, we were looking forward to hosting a, uh, another run, uh, 5K run, which we were looking at partnering with, um, McKinley. And, uh, they were very interested in participating in that, but that obviously had to be canceled, along with some of our other activities. However, during this time, staff has responded spectacularly. And, uh, what we, uh, what they have been doing now is increasing our human services in, in the aspect of serving our seniors and also those who are disabled. The senior lunch program, which normally had about sixty, sixty regular participants, is now up to a hundred and seventy-five. This is a picture of, here of how they're coming through, and, um, a hundred and seventy-five cars are, are coming by, or individuals who each get five meals. Uh, send, this is all in part with the San Dimas Care's project. And then also the Easter egg basket delivery, which we delivered, they delivered eleven-hundred gift baskets to children out in the community. So this is, um, a, in a slide to, to show the, uh, different funds that are used from the general fund for, um, Parks and Recreation. And broken out by fund, facilities, civic center, senior center, park maintenance, parkways and trees, recreation, and the San Dimas Recreation Center. You can see there's changes across the board, um, most of which are negative. There's a, there's a large one here, which is at the senior center, and that goes back to the fact that we are trying to, you know, put the right staffing and personnel and charge it to the right fund. So for example, the senior center did not reflect any personnel cost in years past, and now it does. It actually reflects the staff who are working, the full-time staff who are working there. And that's why there's that big jump there.
So that's mainly staff that's...
Correct.
To a hundred, two percent?
That, so that, that, you know, accounts for the coordinator and the specialist and, and any other support staff in there. Overall, our department total this year decreased by two-point-one percent. And this is just a different depiction of that. This is a little more, more into the weeds here to, to notice where those most notable changes are. And going back to what, uh, Councilmember Ebner asked about graffiti removal. So graffiti removal is here. This hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-dollar increase, sixty-six thousand of that reflects the graffiti contract. The remainder reflects a custodial maintenance contract, which council will be reviewing next week as staff comes to, to you to make a recommendation to hire or procure the services of a different contractor. Personnel increase change is forty thousand. And, um, in your budget proposals, there's a more detailed breakout of how we, how and why, um, this change is there because we are moving, uh, people, staff, employees to the areas where we need them most. So, for example, since Karen's departure in November, uh, Brad has been, you know, there's been a vacancy there in, in facilities. And he, he's been, you know, working very hard and diligent to make sure that, that, uh, nothing is falling through the cracks. And, uh, so we propose, rather than hiring a new facility supervisor, which is a vacancy, is, is rather doing a restructure or reorg and moving another supervisor into that spot, uh, from another division. And then there are two requests for new hires. There's a recreation supervisor, which would be a second recreation supervisor, and a, another coordinator, making it four coordinators. And, uh, kind of going back to the, the old, um, cliche, I guess, it's that, uh, you feed the efficiencies and you start the deficiencies. So as we did an assessment and looked at everything through cost-benefit analysis and, you know, outcome-based ma, management and all of those things, we, uh, we saw in order to, you know, increase our performance, where we felt that the community gets, um, a lot of bang for their buck, and also to enhance the services being provided, that, um, it would make more sense to have, um, that Recreation Services Division enhanced and, um, and then move some other employees around in the other two divisions to, um, to make that work out. Uh, looking back to see all these increases here, but keep in mind, please do keep in mind, that our overall budget is two-point-one percent lower than the year before. This is just a, a slide here that, that kind of breaks it down a little bit more for, for you and for the, the public who may be watching, is that, uh, we break it down by division. And you can see the total here by division. General, from the general fund. And, um, I should make that, um, you know, I should make that more clear because here, for example, park maintenance and parkway, um, parkways and trees, this is only about half of the overall budget because another one million dollars comes from the, um, assessment tax, the parcel tax fund oh-eight. This is a snapshot of the projects being proposed. All of these projects, uh, there are some funds put into these, which, uh, funds twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three were, were designed geographically to be able to take in Quimby fees in accordance to, to that law, to, to make sure that we are capturing the funds where, where that development or that improvement took place. So, um, that's why those funds are set up. Typically, Fund Twenty is a catch-all for park projects. But, um, this year, in working with, with Finance and Michael Bryant more specifically, we talked about doing it this way to better track expenditures geographically, and so that then you can sort of, um, forecast and, and look back, take, take a look back to see how and, and where the, the funding went to what, um, areas. Fund Twelve is the infrastructure fund. And, um, these projects are all outlined here for you. But just to kind of point out, one-fifty is for the surface improvements. So this year, we're doing Horse Steve Canyon Park Trail, uh, as well as San Dimas Canyon, San Dimas Avenue Trails. And, um, you will also be seeing that, that come as a staff report next, uh, next Tuesday, as staff is recommending to award a bid to the lowest contractor. Four-hundred thousand is for the Foothill Boulevard median landscape improvements. All of these projects are outlined in detail in the, um, document that was shared with you, so that you can see the justifications and, and the reasons why. Um, we, Parks and Recreation feel these projects are important. The, um, the other hundred-and-fifty here is for the urban forest reforestation. This year, we started, uh, funding in order to, you know, kind of close the gap on the trees removed versus trees planted that, um, has been taking place for, for the past several years, which equate to more than eleven-hundred vacancies. We just wrapped up the, the new inventory that, uh, West Coast Harbor's performed. So those locations have been selected, uh, or identified more clearly, those eleven-hundred-plus vacancies. And we will start filling those vacancies, uh, in the, in the next couple of weeks with the funding that was set aside in, um, fiscal year nineteen-twenty. And then some, just some different projects here, um, which we can cover if you'd like to know a little more. But, um, um, like I said, those are broken out in more detail in your budget proposal presented.
Are you making improvements to the dog park?
Uh, yes, there's money set aside here for the dog park.
Right.
So this is for trails and dog park. Fifty thousand is for the dog park. So some of the fencing there is in disrepair and needs to be, um, painted and, and fixed.
What, what percentage of, uh, your urban forest restoration, you said you're gonna use money you already have set aside for that, for the, this current budget? What percentage of that is gonna be of your eleven-hundred that you're missing?
So, um, because it, uh, we believe it's important to not only plant a tree, but to also have a young tree care program associated with it because, um, the first couple of years are the most vital to the success of a tree. And when, when, having done my studies with regards to tree mortality, if you don't take care of it, or if the homeowner's not invested in taking care of this tree, there's a high chance probability that it's gonna die. So rather than just plopping a tree in the ground and leaving it for the sake of maybe the neighbors to water it, or, or, you know, the heavens, the, we set up a program with the contractor, who then waters it for, for a year, every week. They'll come by with their truck and they water it. So to answer your question, with the hundred thousand, um, gets us about a hundred and fifty trees, twenty-four-inch box trees. So it would take, if we did a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty, do the math, I guess it'd be, I don't know, help me out, ten years? Somewhere in there, right? Um, maybe eight years? But keeping in mind that every year, trees are dying. They're not just, you know, so more and more trees are gonna die. As you saw in San Dimas Avenue today, we had to remove a large oak that was decayed. You know, that, that been in the ground for a long time. But, um, trees, um, you know, are living things, and they, they actually go through that life cycle, just like we do.
And, and just another quick question. As you know, I'm very, very supportive of, of, of the city, uh, doing a special event, National Night Out. And I am very supportive of the Arbor Day. But I, I think, I guess I wasn't expecting a bill of twenty thousand dollars, being as that they've had events, you know, uh, of the Via Verdi Park, where it didn't think came anywhere near that, and, uh, where they got vol, you know, people donate it money and stuff. Twenty thousand just seems like a big number to me.
Well, uh, keep it, keep it in mind, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, when we discussed it at that, uh, study session, I think it was, um, you said, "Give us a number," right? So we, we did meet with the Sheriff's Department and with the Heroes Organization to come up with a, with a program. Now, if we want to make it a, hit it out of the ballpark event, like I, I believe the council was expecting, there are some costs associated with that. We can't get everything, you know, donated. So we, um, it's a educated estimate. Commonly referred to as a WAG by, by, by us. But it's a very good estimate that, uh, in, in conjunction with getting the, the sheriffs, and, and Captain Burgess here, he can, he can test, we spoke about even having the helicopter. But if the helicopter's not available, then they need to staff it, right? And so those are costs that, uh, we would be picking up. The, uh, National Night Out is probably eighteen thousand of that twenty. The two thousand is for the Arbor Day. So, and if we don't spend it all, which we will try to really be, um, effective and efficient with, with, uh, you know, the public's funds, that, uh, it would sit there till the next year and be rolled over if we didn't use it all.
Give me, give me just a, prior privilege in the perspective. What, what did it cost us last year to do the extravaganza?
So...
I know there are two events, and I realize that, and, and one's bigger than the other, but just give me an idea.
So, um, and, um, manager, Recreation Division manager, Tim Pagano's out in the, uh, conference room out there. But I believe that that event was, if you take into account everything that was brought in and procured, rented, it was about sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, we got, uh, that does not account for staff cost. That's just the equipment and stuff, right? Uh, we were fortunate enough to get close to twenty thousand dollars in donations. So the, the event, um, probably was more like eighty thousand dollars. So, Tim, if you, if you would?
Jim, I was just wondering, could, trying to get in a, uh, just a thumbnail, not a thumbnail, but a more of a dollar value of what the extravaganza cost us last year?
Sure. Director Kisteman's estimate of around sixty-five thousand dollars is correct. Uh, I'd like to bring up the fact that we were very aggressive in getting sponsorships this year, which estimated around twenty thousand dollars in sponsorships to offset that cost to the general fund as well. So while the cost in total was sixty-five thousand, in reality, it cost us to the general fund about forty-five thousand dollars just because of the effort made by the Recreation Division.
So not the eighty thousand that Exeter was talking about?
I was, okay.
All right, I just was trying to wonder, I'm trying to get a, a thumbnail thought of National Night Out versus, you know, what we know was a knock it out of the ballpark.
And, and the eighty thousand is probably relatively close, but we were working with our production company. And that was probably the initial estimate that we received from them as far as to have that, you know, very, uh, well-thought-out event. We worked with them because we expressed to them our desires to put on a, you know, a great event for the community. And they were able to pare down costs to the point where we got it to sixty-five, and then we went out and aggressively sought sponsorships to bring it down to the forty-five thousand that I referenced before.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Does the number...
Does the number that you just talked about for National Night Out include staff costs?
That's correct. It does.
And then the number you're talking about for extravaganza excluded staff costs?
Uh, to a certain extent, because a lot of the staffing costs that was associated with the holiday extravaganza, we did kind of already have that base when we were going into the budget cycle and everything. So that was already accounted for. What we were talking about as far as the eighty-five, then the sixty-five, forty-five, that was all the M and O costs that were associated with that event.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I had a comment and a question. John here.
Go ahead, John.
So, yeah, appreciate Hector, you're looking at the staff and personnel, looking at the roles that need to be done and, you know, using our existing people to fill those roles and, you know, get the department working, you know, the way you and your staff feel is best. So I think that's, that's great to do that kind of a thing. I think that's good for everybody. I do wanna ask though about Funds Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, and Twenty-Three, similar to what I was mentioning about the gas tax, and I know that you're using some gas tax money too, but those park funds, I mean, we're not really getting a lot of Quimby fees into them. So where, where is, I noticed in the budget, online on the budget, it looks like maybe it's like a placeholder because everything's in the red in all those three funds after the year's over. And obviously, that money's gotta come from someplace. So where is that money coming from?
Sorry, John, this is Michael O'Brien to help answer that question. So if you're looking on the first page, that summary, budget summary, where we have those negatives, there are some Quimby fee left over in those Twenty-One, Twenty-Two funds. Basically seventy-seven thousand, three twenty-one in Fund Twenty-One and a hundred ninety-three thousand, eight seventy in Fund Twenty-Two. So the remaining amounts to fund all these projects would basically have to come out of general fund reserves. So basically, Fund Twenty-One, to fund the projects that are listed there, it would take about nine hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars of general fund reserves or revenues to cover that. Fund Twenty-Two, an additional hundred forty-six thousand, one thirty, and then three hundred ninety thousand in Fund Twenty-Three, because currently, there's no fund balance in Fund Twenty-Three. So that'd be strictly general fund numbers coming to take care of that gap.
John, could you repeat those, or?
Michael.
Michael, repeat those, those numbers that are coming out of each, would be coming out of general fund for Twenty-One, Twenty-Two?
Sure. So Fund Twenty-One would be about nine hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars. Fund Twenty-Two would require a hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. And Fund Twenty-Three would require an additional three hundred ninety thousand dollars.
So those are, those are another example of money that we're spending. I like the idea of putting those in those funds because then you can see that the various parts of the community are getting, you know, kind of equal or over time anywhere, they're trying to get equal treatment and equal attention. And I'm supportive of so much of what's in there. Just, again, wanna realize that there's no free money here. It's all coming from someplace and spending it now means we can't spend it later on. That's the only thing, just, again, not arguing the pluses and minuses because by and large, I think everything in Hector's budget is great. I just wanna have that on the table though when we're discussing things.
Yeah, and if you include Fund Twenty, there would be a remaining balance of a hundred ninety-six thousand, six sixty-three that could either be held for future-year projects or could help offset some of those figures I just gave you. So just depending on our strategy of how we want to use those funds.
Yeah, I see that. Thanks. Thanks, Michael. That was Michael.
Yeah.
And also Hector, could you give us a little bit of a better rundown on the Rec Center improvements?
Absolutely. So I actually have a different document prepared that will be presented next week, probably. It's a, it really breaks it down. But we're talking about roof repairs, for example. Some of the, some of the, some of the components, the assets or the amenities, the structure, the, it has not really had the proper funding put aside for it. So we are looking at having to replace, for example, an air conditioning unit that feeds or conditions the men's and women's locker rooms as well as the student union room, which is where the high school teenagers go. And that has been inoperable since the mid-nineties. So there's roofing, roofing issues that I mentioned where nothing has been done since nineteen seventy-nine. There, there are bathrooms that need new tiles. There is also the boiler, the pool heater, the doors, the leaky walls that then leak into the bracket ball courts because they're no longer sealed. What else is there? There's, there's quite, there's a lot of stuff. And I didn't bring that list with me, but I have, I have it all listed and you'll see that next week.
Seven hundred thousand dollars is a band-aid, is that what you're saying?
Seven hundred thousand dollars, I mean, it's a, it's a, an investment, I think, because buildings are very expensive, as you know. To build a new one of those would cost you about twenty million bucks. Now, last year, we put some money, this year, I'm sorry, we put some money, council allocated some money to it, and lots of repairs were done. And some of these things are like, I mean, they're not, we just wanna give it a different color paint. I mean, it's like, it really needs it. So we're not making things up. But between this year and next year, should it be funded, it really will make a big difference in that place. And like I mentioned earlier, our aquatics program last year was spectacular. Not spooktacular, but spectacular. And with revenues being kind of like hit it out of the park, Jeff Reith and support staff did a wonderful job. And that was because of outreach and just going out there and trying to do things, thinking outside the box. However, you know, there's a point where folks are, you know, they're not going there because it doesn't meet their needs, or they just don't like that, or there's, you know, another place they go to. But I think that it would make a big difference for something that does serve the community quite a bit. The number of people that go there, you'd be surprised. It's also used by Bonita Unified School District. So the high school has their water polo and their aquatics programs there. So that place, when aquatics and all that comes back, we can get back in the water, they're gonna need a place to go. And so, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of money, seven hundred thousand dollars. But when you think about a structure that could, if assessed, was probably worth, you know, five million bucks, six million bucks. I mean, that's council, council will have to, you know, help us out there with that, make that decision.
Do you think that, knowing COVID-nineteen the way it is right now, do you think there's gonna become any use out of that facility through the summer?
Well, I think what we're hearing right now, and Brad shared something with me today from a call with city managers of different communities and when they're rolling out their programs. In speaking with other surrounding communities, there is a desire to really get back going. And people are getting very creative on how to do it. And so I'm just, I mean, I understand, I believe it's like through July. But, I mean, you know, with the weather, the way it is in Southern California, we could actually program that thing if we really went into it once opened and good to go to the max. I think we were capable of doing that and seeing a pretty good return on investment, which is, you know, more than in years past. I guess we could be more aggressive that way.
I understand what you're saying about return on our investment. We realize that it's a very, or I realize that it's a very well-used, used facility. But looking at our budget and looking at things going, would there be any, any measure that we could look, that we should look at is not closing it for the year and saving that money?
So, I mean, that's, there's a lot to unpack in that question because even keeping it, you know, just say you close it, you really can't close it because you can't drain the pools, right? Because then you're now creating even more problems for the plaster and the pipes and all of the stuff. So you need to keep a certified pool operator out there, keeping it, you know, in check. There's still, you gotta keep the lights on, you gotta have water. And so there are still costs associated with that. The emergency fund, the emergency budget that you'll see next week will point that out. You'll see the difference there. But it's still, you know, still a good chunk of change, all things considered.
Yeah, let me, let me make it clear. I've had nobody say, what about closing it for, you know, for a year or anything like that? And, you know, I heard some rumors just around when people were just betting things around, but I've had nobody walk up to me and say, you guys need to close that or anything like that. I just, you know, I'm just, quite honestly, I'm looking at numbers. And that's a, that's a huge number.
Understand, yes.
And so, you know, when I start looking at that versus some of the other things that folks want, that number just pops right out at me. So, okay, well, thank you.
Okay. And finally, this is a comparison of our restricted fund budget in nineteen twenty compared to our proposed budget twenty-twenty-one. There is an eight percent increase in that. So earlier, I mentioned two-point-eight million or so. So that was in, starting with Fund Twelve down this way because Walker House, like, those are separate funds specifically for the Walker House. And you can see here, that, there's a big increase here, right? From the year before, this year, because it needs to be painted. It's like in dire need of paint on the south-facing walls. And Facilities Manager Brad Stewart reports that every time we get a good rain, I mean, there's water inside the walls. So the landscape parcel tax, as discussed, is a, you know, this was back in the two thousands, I believe, you know, when, when the city passed this, residents of San Dimas passed this. But as costs continue to go up for doing maintenance, cost of maintenance, you know, cost of doing business keeps going up. So there's some general fund going in here to subsidize that. The golf course is its own, and T, and then these two districts here as well. So all these aside, you know, taking these into account here, you know, it's about, I think, two-point-five million bucks in projects. So, yeah, so, any questions on that? I think this is, this is the final slide, actually. So, again, we can look at this and say, do we purchase a scissor lift to take care of our lights inside our buildings and, you know, in our facilities? Or do we rent it, or do we contract out services for that? You own a piece of equipment, you own it, you know, it's yours. There's a cost of maintenance on that and it depreciates. This Toro Dingo is this thing here. So it's, it's a front dump, trencher, rototiller, what, all the, you know, so the reason for it is because our performance metrics in our turf fields, our sports turf fields, we're trying to get here, from here. So you saw the improvements on, on the softball fields at Splex, Marchand Park was before that. And this coming year, we're proposing to do the two baseball fields at Splex. Well, staff has to then maintain it from that point forward, right? So that you don't find yourself, again, having to redo it in a couple of years. So this year would help us be able to maintain the fields and along with this. Now, what's an aerator? It's the thing that pokes holes into the grass. Well, in order for grass to be healthy, it needs oxygen. And so you poke holes into it and put fertilizer down and water and that, lo and behold, you get nice green grass. So that's what that is. That's it for me. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Edgar. So based on the preliminary budget, this is kind of the slide that Councilmember Ebner, Mayor Bader, were talking about that shows all the negative fund balances in some of these restricted funds, which Michael O'Brien indicated that are gonna have to be funded through general fund. None of it is free money. As you can see with the list, the negative balances on the right include the landscape parcel tax, which Hector mentioned, infrastructure, open space one, two, and three, and equipment replacement. And then also drastic special fund balances reductions in Prop C and Measure M. So I wanted to highlight that, but we kind of already discussed this earlier on. And then the final slide is the balances for the successor agency, successor housing, and Housing Authority funds and grant totals. So with that, that concludes our presentation. It was a lot of information. And would like to, does council have any questions that we can?
You know, just a housekeeping matter. I was watching, I was watching all the monitors, okay? And at no time could anyone see who was speaking. So next time, next week, when we do this again, we have the directors, when they get up there, say, you know, their name and, and name and what they're, you know, who they represent. I know that, we know them, but like, when one director was finished, he said, I'm gonna leave it to Sherry, or I'm gonna leave it up to Henry. Okay, but maybe it'd be good just to have that person say, you know, their full name, or, you know, not their full name, just their name and who they represent, what, you know, Parks and Rec or something like that.
Yep, will do. So with the presentation and Councilmember Vienna kind of addressed this at the beginning, that he would like to continue this to the next meeting. And in order for the staff to kind of go back to the drawing board, whether it's this meeting or next meeting, we'd like to get a little direction on what you guys want to see. You guys, we tried to present everything, which was requested, on projects that we feel are important to the city. But moving forward, what your comfort level is with using reserves? Whether you, you wanna only use, do critical projects that possibly could reduce increased cost on infrastructure down the road? But get a little bit direction so we have a, kind of a target at where we should go and try to develop a budget. We can go back to the O and M, but a lot of the costs are in projects, general fund projects, as you saw with all the negative balances. So any direction that we can get would be great. And we can go back and present you guys another preliminary budget.
I'll just ask a couple of questions, I guess, on, one is, are you actively recruiting for the eight, I think, I counted vacancies?
No.
All right. I would ask, and I don't know what the general council consensus is, but my preference would be that you hold off on hiring any of those positions until council makes some further decisions as it relates to the budget. Those vacancies, I'd be curious what the number is with salaries and employee benefits. If those positions were frozen, what does that number come out to? So I'd be curious what that number is. Oh.
Michael, Michael, I'll have that in a second.
Oh, there you go. The second thing is, you know, I gotta be honest, you know, this exercise last year, this is a markedly different presentation, I think, that I've seen from staff. And that's not a, go ahead, Mike.
I don't have the exact number from it, but we did do the calculations there. They tried to come up scenarios of how we can generate some sort of savings through staff reductions or not filling vacancies. But if I recall correctly, it was around the range of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars if we didn't fill in those positions.
Okay, all right, thanks. So my point is that this presentation, I think, was really good. And I appreciate all the work everybody put into it, which is why I would be more comfortable taking some time to digest this, to be frank, to be fair to the work that was done to this. What's unique to me about this is, in the past, you know, we'd get a nice presentation of wish list things and it was very easy to pick from, you know, and scrap things. But in this case, staff presented some very high-level, very strong things, I think, that are not very surfacy at all. As a matter of fact, there's some very deep things in each department, I think, did a good job in pointing. I think, did a good job in pointing out what those specific needs are for the community and for their respective department. Obviously, I, I don't know, you know, what the consensus of council will be, but I think there's a lot to consider here. So I just, I want to make sure I do my part to really understand what was just presented. So thank you all for everything you did on that.
Dennis?
I thought staff did a very good job. I, I think what's going to have to happen, though, is that the budget's going to have to be cut. And even though staff member may think there's two priorities, they're going to have to decide which priority is more important than the, than the other one. That will help us make the decision in the end.
John?
Yes, in, in general, I think there's going to be, there's going to have to be some hard decisions. And some of the projects and things that we all like, individually especially, are going to have to be looked at. So I would, I, I know that next week, Brad, you were saying we're going to have the emergency budget, which that'll be interesting to see how that stacks up. And I, I hope there's like an easy way to see what's taken out and not being done in, you know, the full-on budget compared to the emergency budget. I, I think that's the idea for next week, right? You're going to present a bare-bones kind of budget?
That, at the council's direction, we can present that bare-bones budget or get feedback from what you guys get from, from this budget. And then, based on that feedback, can use our, use our emergency budget and, and your comments and come back with a proposed budget that kind of meshes them both together. Once I get a better feel for where your comfort level is on, on reserve levels and what projects you're looking for.
All right, wait, John, may I, may I say something?
Yeah. So, so what I was kind of getting at was that, that's a, that's a great idea. In that sense, there almost needs to be kind of a, a way of comparing the three things that we're talking about. That bare-bones budget, the full-on budget we just saw, and then something in the middle that you're going to give us. Because there may be some things in the emergency budget where we just don't realize with all the line items, what might be available to, to not do. But I would, one challenge I would throw out, for my part, would be that, just as an example, the equipment that we were thinking about getting, and it looked like there were three trucks, and then there were the three great items that Hector was just talking about, that, you know, if you had to pick two out of those three, what would you pick? Or four out of the six, let's, let's put it that way, if you wanted to look at all, all those together. So I, I, I would like to see what that, that would do. So it's not like cutting everything out, but it's like, what, what can you do with two-thirds? Same with, and I'll say it as, as the primary tree lover on the council, that I know we want to plant 150 trees or whatever that number was. And I told Hector before the election that I wanted to plant a thousand trees in the next four years, which would be 250 a year. But we may want to do the same kind of thing, where if we're trying to plant 150, maybe we see what 100 is going to look like. And then, the only other thing I'll say is I, you know, I saw that we were going to be trying to get some revenue, or the idea was get revenue by raising dog licenses and certain things from the Humane Society. And I, I'm not for getting revenue that way in my, in my, my own preference. But there's a lot of things to do this. I wouldn't want to cut everything out and I, but, you know, one idea, one thought anyway, is that we do use a lot of reserves this year, or some amount, it's kind of up there. Maybe not the full-on 5 million or whatever it was, that was the biggest hit, or 10 million. But, but we use a lot this year just to get these things done and then throttle back the year after if we find out that things are really not going, not, not improving. We always have that session that we do in the fall or late fall to see how things are going. And that session will be even more important this year with the things reopening and hopefully, hopefully revenue picking up again. So those are some of my thoughts.
Thank you, John. Eric?
I completely agree that this is a massive amount of work. And I just want to thank staff for putting it together. It's a lot, like Mayor Proton Vienna was saying, it is a lot to digest. I think overall, my philosophy when it comes to the budget is that there's a lot of unknowns right now. I would be okay spending some reserves. That's, I mean, it is a rainy day and, a rainy day fund, and it, right now, it's raining. So it, that's what that's there for. I would just, I would like to see something that kind of protects, while it utilizes the reserves, it also protects it to, to give us something to fund the city in the future, because we don't really know how long this, the effects of COVID-19 are really going to, to affect the, the economy, the city. So this is something more balanced, I think, would be, would, would be what I'm interested in. Something between the bare-bones budget and what we just got.
All right, you know what, I, I would, you know, echo everybody's thoughts. You guys did a heck of a lot of work in a, in a, in a period of time, you know. But I can tell you right now, I'm not at all looking at 2022, 23, of a one, leaving, keeping 200 and some odd thousand dollars. That's, that's, would be insane on our side and definitely irresponsible. But, you know, I, earlier I heard, I'd like to have any chance to go through this. We didn't get it till fairly late this afternoon. Actually, we got it probably one or so, I don't know. That's when I, when I remember it. And I tried to look at it, and there, there's a lot of more information than, than I can saturate. And then we talk about an emergency budget. What, we have a council meeting on next Tuesday, right?
Yes.
What I'd propose is that we come in an hour early and you get the feedback that we, after we've looked at this, and then propose like a Wednesday or Thursday, have another study session to handle your, your emergency bare-bones budget. That, that's what I'd like to see, but I'm open for any.
Are you, are you saying come in an hour early to start our council meeting an hour early?
No, no. Come in for a study session, but televise study session at 6 o'clock to get the feedback from, after you've reviewed, reviewed the budget. And then schedule, and then the emergency budget for like Wednesday night or Thursday night. So we'd, we'd come in at 6 o'clock on Tuesday night for the council meeting for a study session, but televise it. And then do the council meeting. And then on Wednesday, do a study session, do the study session to talk about the budget.
Were, weren't we scheduled to come in early anyways on Tuesday?
We were scheduled to come in at 5 o'clock. Yes, scheduled for a study session and, and just, I'm trying to, it's, it's, I'm trying to figure out the turnaround time. But once we get information from you guys on Tuesday, in order to prepare for Wednesday, it is, is, is not doable to be able to get the information out to the public like, like Mr. Inderly said. That's why I'm trying to, we can, we can have a study session and, and present the emergency budget, what's different from this budget, what we've cut, and then also get your, your feedback overall. And then that would give us enough to probably come back at a different, not, not, not Wednesday or Thursday, because it's going to take some time to revamp this whole budget. But the following week or, or the week after that to, to present what we think will meet your guys' needs and desires.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that the schedule actually is, is pretty good. We've got a 5 o'clock study session next week at our, before our regular city council meeting. We've got two more meetings. I, I honestly think that we don't need a special meeting. I'm willing to do a special meeting if everybody else wants to. But I think by the first meeting in June, with, with our comment on next Tuesday's study session, which is a two-hour study session, and, and we can even go far, longer if we, after the regular meeting if we wanted to. But that would probably give staff enough information to really come up with a, a solid budget that fulfills our wishes, still subject to minor tweaks on the next meeting. But, but Emmett, maybe you're thinking that should be like a special meeting where we give our final direction. Is that what you're thinking?
And, and, and John, I, or Councilmember Ebner, I think that is doable. We can present the changes in the emergency budget, get your feedback, and then really present a draft budget at the, because it's going to take some time to go back and redraft the budget. At that June 9th meeting, it's either you guys are going to feel comfortable with it or not. If you don't, we can have a special meeting that week of June 14th and then present the proposed budget for adoption on the last meeting in June. This would give us, because we're going to get a lot of information after the council meeting on Tuesday. This would give us a good two weeks to, to redraft this, make sure we get the information out to the community when the agenda goes out, and just give us some time. Because I think, once we hear that info, we're going to be able to, we are going to be able to propose a budget that you guys feel comfortable with.
Thank you. That sounds good to me. How's that sound to you, John?
I think that's a great idea. It really gives them time to, so, so next week, we'll have a lot of numbers in front of us, and we've got two hours at least to really delve into it and wrestle about what things we want to do or not do. And then, you know, they'll have almost final direction. They can put together a budget in the next two weeks and really present something solid to us. And as Brad said, it is important to get it out to the community. And, and it'd be great to get it out to the community more than just the three days that were required to get it out to the community. I'd, I'd like to get it out there a week beforehand, at, at least some ideas so the community knows what, what they're seeing.
Yeah, as, as we all know, there are, these are unprecedented times and people are asking questions and, and, because, you know, many of us have said, this is going to be pretty, you know, pretty drastic in what we're doing because we, you know, sales tax is down, gas tax is down, everything is down, so. I believe that's going to, Dennis, you got it? You're okay? So Eric?
Emmett, before, before, I just want to get clear direction. I don't, I don't want to spend two hours going over all this information. So the presentation on emergency budget isn't going to be a full-blown presentation. It's going to be broken down to what's different from this budget to the emergency. So directors will, will talk about their department and what the differences are. So I'm, I'm hoping it's a handful of slides, so we can have more dialogue and less presentation, because this one was so long, if that's okay with you guys. Does that make sense?
I, I'm just finding out, we got to be here at 5 o'clock next week. I missed that on my calendar, so whenever I see that calendar invite, maybe I'll know about it. But the other thing is, though, for the mayor, I'm just curious if we wanted to allow people in the community to call in and say anything. They normally would be here and we've been pretty participative about letting people.
You mean tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, but John, after we give the, the public an opportunity to call in, then we'll go to council comments, and then that's when you can use, you, you know, use your time to say what you wanted to say.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, all right. You know what, when we take this opportunity, if you wanted to, if members of the public would like to call in and ask any questions, the, the number's on the, on the screen. We'll give it about two or three minutes to give you an opportunity to call in and, and see what happens.
Thank you for calling, you're live. Hello, you're live.
The caller who just called in, could you call back? We've evidently lost your, your call, so please call back. We'll give it a couple more minutes here.
And just remember, when you die, when you call in, you're 30 seconds ahead of what's on the TV or on your streaming. So don't wait for something to happen on the, on the stream before you start talking.
Okay, seeing, hearing none, no, no call-ins, we'll open it up for council comments, and we'll start with John.
Sure, yeah, just a couple, three things, actually. One, I noticed there was, there was discussion about making the stream, streaming video at higher definition. And so for everybody who's been talking about that and asking about that, I know that our staff's working on that. And hopefully in, within a month or so, we might have a better quality look on the stream so people can see those charts and everything else. Secondly, I know the Mobile Home Accord has been extended just due to the crisis and everything. But there have been, has been some talk in the Mobile Home Parks anyway about whether the current formula really fits in with the low rate of inflation and Consumer Price Index increase that we've been seeing the last few years. So just to those who have called about that, if you're watching this, know that we are looking at that and we want to make sure that we get that right. So we'll be talking about, about that. But, you know, Ann Garcia is working on that. I know Brad's on top of that, too. So that was just one thing. And lastly, you know, we're in the middle of a COVID-19 crisis, and that's why I'm not there. But there is going to be, in, in the pretty near future, reopening of restaurants, as an example, for dining, for people to dine in, in the restaurant. And I think that the city of San Dimas should be proactive in looking how to help restaurants, get, get, you know, get as many people as they can with all the rules that will be in place. And one thing that I know, I've heard some cities are doing, and I'd like to take, like us to take a look at it if we, if we could. And that's to use outdoor space. So cities are, are either using parts of the street, a parking lot, or, you know, alleys or sidewalks, whatever. A couple of examples that come to mind that might work for, and, and obviously every, there's lots of restaurants, but you take Sweet Savory, not Sweet and Savory, Twisted Sage, or Olive Garden, and there might be some parking lot space that could be repurposed temporarily. And obviously, staff has to work with the restaurant on this, so we can have outdoor dining with tables far apart like they're going to have to be. Ditto for downtown restaurants where Sweet and Savory would count in this, Pizzatos and others. We could use the, that space between, you know, right by the feed and grain, the sidewalk outside, kind of the little plaza area near the clock tower, and also the, kind of the alleyway, that used to be an alleyway there. And, you know, I'm sure Pizzatos wouldn't mind sending their servers down to that area if they can get more people to be able to use the restaurant. So, so I think there's some, I mean, some are even talking about closing off streets to, to do this and let the restaurants use the street on certain nights. So I don't know how far we want to go, but I think, I'm, I'm just, this is sort of like a, an idea that maybe our staff can, can look at and see how we can make sure that the restaurants can get as many diners as possible. Because I'm telling you, people are going to be hungry, to coin a phrase, to get out and, and eat out as soon as the restrictions are, as soon as the prohibition is lifted and there's just the restrictions. So that's one thing that can be kind of exciting, I think, if we can help our, help our businesses out that way. And that's all for me.
Thanks, John. Eric?
I've got nothing else to say.
Thank you. Ryan?
I got another one.
Oh, my God. Dennis?
That's all I can say is that I think your staff did an excellent job tonight. And I think the community is very lucky that we've been so prudent with our budgets in the past that we have such a reserve that we can use a little bit of it each year to maybe even things out so it's not so drastic. And stay healthy, everyone.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to comment that last weekend, being Saturday and Sunday, that the county health department was in town, going from business to business, checking to see if they were obeying the rules. And as of right now, I haven't heard one, one business that, one, was upset that they were checking, and two, that the county did not give them a, a good, good posting and say, put this on your window and you're okay. So our businesses, especially in the downtown and up on foothill, are playing by the rules. And so we got nobody looking at us, you know, silized, so maybe we can start getting on, on with life. But I also want to remind people that the city of San Dimas, although we can be stricter than the county rules in, in all of these things, we cannot be more lenient. in, in all of these things, we cannot be more lenient. So people call daily wanting to know when we can open up their businesses, why are you doing this? While you're the mayor of this city, the Long Beach mayor's doing it, but it's a whole different world. The Long Beach mayor has a health department that he has to deal with, we have the LA County Health Department, and we have to play by their rules, so, but you rest assured that Brad and, and the other staff members are talking to the county daily, knowing that they want, you know, we want to get, get it opened up. Uh, our golf courses are finally open, uh, I, I, you know, they have special rules, but it understands, it's not, I understand that golfers are out there of both facilities. And just in closing, I, I want to say that I really liked what John was proposing about being a little bit open-minded about tables, letting, letting businesses, when they start opening, be a little more flexible with putting some outside dining, dining in, some ideas. You know, there are some restaurants that have, um, there are, uh, parking lot areas, and maybe let them, you know, put a couple of tables out there if they get permission from their management of, of the parking lot, or the, the, uh, shopping centers, but that just is a, probably a very good idea to allow, allow people to be able to get out. Um, and so I, I, I really support what John was saying, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one last comment?
Sure.
Uh, just for clarity to the community, um, I have to give John Lee and staff appreciation. Uh, part of COVID-19, obviously, with social distancing, and John Lee and, and staff were able to, uh, help with another historic moment, where I have the first city-issued iPad, actually council's got most of them. Um, I was able to get it provisioned today with John's help, and, uh, I'm actually able to get my agenda now electronically. Um, I actually have a pen that I can actually highlight, um, which is a super, uh, cool technological advancement, and it also allows us to be able to telecommute and use things like Zoom and WebEx. Um, so it's a pretty momentous accomplishment, um, here. I thank John and staff for, for doing that, and I thank, uh, the rest of the council members, I know he's got us, some of them there. Um, and when people ask part of this, um, as I was talking to John a little bit, I think, um, this will assist us in the future, uh, obviously in these challenging times with COVID-19, with social distancing, uh, telecommuting and remote work, and the savings that we're gonna realize, uh, in not having to, uh, have print. So I actually, one, got this out of the bag just in case, um, but moving forward, barring any sort of, uh, thing that can't fit in the scan, then, um, I'm probably not gonna need a printed, uh, agenda or packet anymore. I'll have basically the same thing everyone else has online. So I just wanted anyone to know, if you see the iPad here in front of me, um, it is a city device, and, um, and I'll be using that from, uh, moving forward, and thank you, staff. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. When we adjourn, we'll be adjourning off to a study session, staff presentation, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. We're going into a closed session, public employee discipline, dismissal, and release. Number two is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code four, no, 549, 56.9D2. We have one case. Okay? We'll reconvene the city council meeting, uh, just coming out of closed session, we'll have a report from the city, city attorney, Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council met tonight in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda, uh, one, public employee discipline, dismissal, release, and one item of exposure to litigation. Uh, city council discussed those items, but there's no legally reportable action tonight.
Any comments from the city council? Move for adjournment? Good night.